Opening with the LPA first, you want to do roll call?
Board Chair McKay?
Present.
Vice Chairman, Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Member Bright Cruz?
Here.
Member Jablonsky?
Here.
And Member Schroeder?
Here.
All right, if we could please stand for the pledge. Gay, I'm gonna ask you to lead.
Fire it up.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll be doing that again in a few minutes. You want to read what this is or pass it?
I'll read it, Mayor. This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending adoption of the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2018 through 2022 and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Awesome. Any public comment in this matter? I don't think so, but seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to us, call the question.
Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Member Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes. All right.
Motion passes.
That's all we've got, isn't it?
That's correct, that's correct, Mayor.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay. So, let's stand and do the pledge all over again, if we may.
Roll call?
Roll call, you want to do roll call first? Do roll call first, please.
Sorry.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Thank you. John, Bob Hardman, would you lead us? My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Where's the fire to warm us up? It's freezing out here.
Yep, legislative update. Mr. Jenny and Representative Stark. Jenny, you want to go first? Thank you for coming. We always appreciate you coming out and seeing us and thank you and
We'll figure it out.
I'll be up to see you at Broward Days.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't know who else is joining us, but I'll definitely be there, so.
Thank you so much and thank you for having us here.
I'll be there.
Oh, good, good. The more the merrier. That's what Broward Days is for and it's a great time to see all of you up there and to reinforce what the priorities are for the town and make sure that we try to follow through as best we can. This is going to be a bit of an odd session. I think in terms of budgetary issues, that in projects that we can work on together, I think this year is a really good opportunity and unfortunately, that is due to politics because we have every cabinet level position, including the governor's office and the United States Senate, all opening up at one single time. Given that fact and given that at least one of the presiding officers will be running statewide as well, I think the purse strings will be a little bit looser this year, quite frankly, with people trying to make people all across the entire state as happy as possible in terms of the budget. Right, exactly. A lot of people are going to be looking for support that have never been to Broward County or Southwest Ranches before, so I'm hoping that that helps with drawing down some state dollars for the town. I think in terms of policy this year, it's going to be a little bit of a heavier load, to be completely honest with you. There's been a lot going on in the United States as a whole in terms of sexual harassment and the Florida legislature has not been immune to that whatsoever. It has caused a, it is, there's a dark cloud over Tallahassee and it has really slowed a lot of the process down. There is a brand-new budget chair in the Senate that just took the reins about a week ago, or excuse me, about two weeks ago and it's really kind of gummed up the works and in terms of just the process. Everything has been slowed down because of these key positions opening up and having to be restarted again and that's the price that we're paying for what, for decades in Tallahassee where inappropriate behavior was just not looked at and not really examined. But that's not the case anymore. So, some goodwill come out of it, but I think due to that and due to some other circumstances, we're going to have a much slower year in terms of policy. I really think if it's going to be, if it's not a first floor or a fourth floor priority and when I say first and fourth floor, the first floor is where the governor and the cabinet members reside and on the fourth floor is where the two presiding officers, the Senate President and the Speaker of the House reside. So, I think if it's not that or just a universally beloved bill we do have an agenda and there's going to be an agenda in Tallahassee as well. And, but I think unless it's something along the lines of the Puppies and Kittens Act of 2018 or one of those priorities, it's going to be a pretty tough road for bills this year and for policy. But we'll definitely do everything within our power to go out there and do the best that we can for the town, that we can for Broward County and for the state of Florida. And my office is, as you know, always, you're always welcome there, all of you are always welcome to come talk to me if you need me to come to you, more than happy to as well. There are major issues that we're going to, that we're going to have to tackle this year and unfortunately, all too well, the people of Southwest Ranches through no fault of their own experienced after the hurricane and there's a lot of things that we need to get up there and fix and I hope that in a slow year, we prioritize those things because as the saying goes, it's not a matter of if, but when, when it comes to hurricanes living in South Florida. So, I think a lot of improvement needs to be made there. I think you would all agree with me on that particular front and I look forward to serving the city, continuing to work with the folks that, your outside folks from Southern Strategy who, I have to say, it's a very good relationship that I am happy to have. Happy to say that in my first time around in the legislature, I didn't have an inch of Southwest Ranches. When I came back a couple of years ago, that changed and the relationship that we've been able to build between myself and the city and knowing exactly what it is you need and with that assistance from Southern Strategy Group as well, has really been beneficial, I hope. I know it has been for me personally and I hope it has been for the town as well. So, thank you for having me and I'm sure that you want to hear from Representative Stark and then if anyone has any questions, it's my responsibility to answer to.
When's the session going to close this year?
It will close, will start in early January, it'll go through February and end in early March and that'll be that. It's an early start.
I think Broward Days is seventh and eighth or something of February.
Yes, it will, so please bring your overcoat. It will be colder, I promise you, more likely than not, it will be colder that week than any week we have down here for the entire year of 2018.
Awesome, appreciate the heads up.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming out, greatly appreciate it.
I'll step aside.
Representative Stark, welcome.
Well, councilmembers, great to see you. Now, of course, I'm trying to think, is there anything else left for me to talk about? But Representative Jenny really gave you a very good overview of what we're expecting to see. So far, the, now I'm on the appropriations committee, the budget that we were presented with last week by the governor is the largest probably in the history of the state, it's about $87 billion and some of the things that we haven't seen in a while are there, you know, bigger increases in what we're going to be spending on education and a few things on the environment, basically all across the board, healthcare, you name it. This is going to be a very unusual year coming up. You're going to see a lot of jockeying around between different people that are like between the Senate President, the Speaker of the House, the governor, all running for high-level seats in the upcoming election. So, it's going to be definitely very interesting and who's going to present what this coming year. Representative Jenny also did touch on, you know, some of the things that are coming out with, you know, sexual harassment, things like that. If you read online, you see that this is going on in every single state legislature throughout the country, aside from the federal government itself. Where the rules are going to end up, I mean, this is where we are right now. I know a lot of people saying, well, we don't know really what the rules are, they're changing, but these are things that had to be addressed and now they're out in the open and everywhere that we are, they're going to have to be spoken to and the final, you know, final rules are going to, people, how they're going to engage in the workplace are going to have to be set. As far as how the legislature is going to operate this year, we do have a few, you know, people have moved on, some people have been appointed by the Trump administration and so we have vacancies in a few of the legislative slots. We had, due to some of the scandals, we've had at least one or two resignations and possibly a few more coming, so it's going to be an area of flux because we're going to have to have special elections or be dealing with some seats that'll be left vacant. Now, for me personally, it's been a pleasure for me to, you know, serve as your state representative. You know, I always do say that, you know, it's not my seat, the seat belongs to the public and I'm happy to be a member, to be serving in this seat right now. I do have one term left after this, if I'm reelected and that'll be next year. We do, you know, it is a two-year seat, so we are all up every two years and hopefully I'll be around for another two years and it's hard, kind of hard to believe that really we talked about this almost six years ago and seven years ago, my first times coming to, you know, to, you know, to the town council when you used to be over in the other location and then moved here and really have really done some tremendous things with the town. It's been nice growth and it's been great to, you know, been able to work with you and to work with my friend Vince over here, who definitely brings a lot of excitement to the town council, so that's really it. But I would like to say also, you know, if we don't get a chance to do it, just to wish everybody, you know, happy holidays, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Hanukkah for all your Jewish residents as well.
Let me jump in, if I may, and ask you a couple of things. As I mentioned to you earlier, whatever, you come in here a little wounded, not realizing it because of that annexation issue or whatever, so I've got to tell you, me personally, I was a little surprised that when you learned about it, that you didn't either call me or call the administrator or the town attorney and say, hey, do you realize what Pines is up to, whoever, because we didn't know anything about this till a few days before, I'm not sure, but anyhow. And then along the ways we learned about it, you know, talked to you briefly about it and I said, we're not for any of this or whatever and we talked to some other people and we had to rally the troops and they had hired, you know, Ron Book to help get that thing pushed through or whatever and we were scrambling to get that stopped and held at bay, so I got to tell you, we are a little disappointed that you didn't reach out to us when you learned about it. So, one would think that not only you represent them, you represent us, you represent some other areas, so, but moving forward is difficult, but anyhow, we were able to shut it down at that point, we don't know what else Pembroke Pines is going to try. They've made a statement in the past that they're not done until they buy up the town of Southwest Ranches, so I don't know if any of my colleagues have anything they want to pitch in here.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, well, wherever you got to start.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather hear from Representative Stark.
Anyhow, if you want to respond to my
Well, yeah, we really didn't know very much about this until not very long before that meeting and if I recall, I, one of my first things finding out about it was actually hearing from Andy Burns and so we had quite, as far as I know, we had quite a few conversations about that and I wound up going around, meeting with as many people as I could to find out what's going on and then we had to walk in cold into a delegation meeting, trying to figure out what, you know, why are we, you know, getting hit with this at the moment and how are we going to handle it and we had to work with on ourselves to see what we could do to shut it down and which we were able to do. But my recollection was not avoiding the town of Southwest Ranches, but actually, you know, speaking with, you know, with, and I know you and I had a conversation about this, so.
It was really, it was really late in the game though.
Yeah, it was late in the game for us.
It's like, we didn't even know about it, I'm like, hey.
We didn't know about it either. We had a delegation meeting, I can't even remember what day of the week it was, but we did not get this proposal until like, really not, not long before. You know, it was like a very last-minute thing to begin with, so this wasn't something that had been sitting out there, you know, for weeks. You know, this was something that was presented and we didn't expect it.
One of those underhanded things Pembroke Pines attempts to do, not the first time. General, who else, who wants to go next? Steve?
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. My issue is this, I mean, I was not at the meeting, but I did listen to the tape of the meeting and frankly, it was clear that this was, this was happening, this was going through. We got no heads up from anybody. 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 And it was just, we were fortunate that our mayor kind of read between the lines and insisted that we, that we
Keith.
That we research and Keith dug into it and lo and behold, there it was. Many people, yourself included, knew about it before we did, so I'm not buying what you're saying. I understand that it was not a long time before, but when you find out two days before, four days can make a big difference. And I listened to that recording of it and frankly, it was one after the other, after the other, after the other, that this is a no-brainer, this should go through, this should go through, this should go through and it wasn't till our people got up, our mayor, our town administrator, our attorney.
Attorney.
Our attorney did an amazing job. Our attorney saved the day and that was the only thing that turned it around. You know, I can take, honestly, I understand politics. Every one of us sits up on this podium and I'm sure everyone that sits out there understands politics. I get that. Pembroke Pines is bigger than us, I get it. But what I don't get is knowing something like this is going on and not immediately picking up the phone and letting us know. Even if it's to say, listen, this is going on, you guys may want to be prepared, but I'm either going to have to bow out of it or I'm going to have to support Pines because reality is, was reality. That I can respect. Knowing it and not immediately picking up the phone, I'm sorry, that I cannot respect.
My turn?
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah. First off, I want to thank you and Representative Jean for all that you've done for us. You've done a lot.
And continue.
And, you know, and we continue to work together with the Broward delegation, with you guys representing us for projects and all that and I want to say thank you on that upfront. As you can, as you figured out from that Broward delegation meeting, we're a pretty passionate group of individuals and I'm basically talking to both of you gentlemen right now and I understand you weren't there. I have listened to the audio twice and somebody close to the mic was flicking paper, so I kept hearing a lot of clicks and I'm hard of hearing on top of it, so I had to really go through it. But, you know, we look at it as, and I'm probably, I'm older than both of you guys, but you guys probably young enough to remember in civics, something called the domino theory. It was very, very widely used in the 1950s and 60s with Russia and, you know, brief history lesson where one falls and it just keeps falling. And we have direct evidence that the policy of Pembroke Pines is to buy up Southwest Ranches. What they couldn't do in 1997 and in the polls in 1990 and the year 2000, they're trying to do with the purse. That was, that's pretty plain. So, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. Do you support something like that when two municipalities, when one municipality does not want that? Do you support that? Is it a, can I get a yes or a no out of it?
No, the answer is no. The delegation had decided a long time ago that it, predates me, that they did not support one municipality annexing parts of another municipality without the two of them agreeing to it. And this, this was an unexpected, like, you know, we call it a local bill, was not expected, we didn't see this thing coming and so, of course, I had to start researching what's going on here. And I think the only person I really spoke to outside when I spoke to the mayor was I had spoken to Andy Burns to go over what exactly, what is this? And you sent me diagrams and all sorts of stuff and then I made an appointment to see Pembroke Pines, I wanted to know what they, what was going on, you know, what's, you know, what is it exactly you're doing? Then, of course, you know, and Senator Farmer will tell you the same thing, I, we were receiving some pressure behind the scenes, you know, you have to do this, you know, and I, so when we got to the meeting, you know, we had to think of a way, you know, what, let everybody testify, but I don't think that everybody's in favor. In fact, I started making calls around to my colleagues, most of who were not aware of it or said I got comfortable with another municipality wanting to get land from another municipality without, you know, without, you know, without people agreeing. Now, there were some people on the other side, I will tell you that, but, you know, we really weren't sure what the, you know, what was going to go on in this meeting. It was like something we were hoping that somebody was not going to present that kind of a bill, but we had to hear it and then either TP it, which is temporarily postpone it, which is what we did. And so, the only thing I can tell you is we're going to have to be more prepared next year, I just didn't expect.
Well, this is probably going to come back, probably going to come back.
It may.
You know, well, they stated they were going to bring it back, I mean, it's kind of an obvious thing and I know you're not speaking for Representative Jean and Jean, Representative, I'd love to hear your answer, a definitive yes or no on this, if you
I believe, I'm sorry, Rick.
No, go ahead.
I believe the question was, do you support when, when, an annexation, when one of the two cities is not in favor of that annexation? No, I do not support allowing that.
I just wanted that to get on the record.
Yeah, no, no, no.
And so, we all have an understanding.
Unless there's, unless both cities agree and I would think, and the only way to get that done is if there was some recompensation somehow, but like I said, to make a clear cut and both cities need to agree.
That's really what I'm, that's what I'm after, you know, something like that, you know, because I think that would have, if you guys had a law like that, or obviously there isn't one, I don't think there's one, it would be, you know, the point would be moot at this point, you know.
Yeah.
And I mean, if anything, you know, if you look at a map of, we have a map drawn here of our town.
You can come get this and look at this one if you guys would have.
Well, I had a copy of that.
And, and you can see how it's
I think this is a different one.
This is squared off, if you were to square off the town, you would be
You can have that, take that with you, just.
Yeah, before, we were cherry picked back in the 90s and the last
We're going to put it up on the map on the wall behind us here and just
Yeah, Keith can give us better
And Russell's going to put it up for everyone to see, but it's just for educational purposes. The town used to be a perfect rectangle.
Yep.
Okay, we were. Until the 1990s, when Broward County made a decision that all unincorporated areas had to either incorporate or become part of a municipality, the town was cherry picked by major political forces that grabbed very important areas within the town. So, what the town in the future will be looking for, if this game of de-annexation of other municipalities without their consent continues, is to square our boundaries the way that the boundaries were supposed to be when the town was originally formed. And this is a perfect map to show everyone. The area directly to the left was the area that Pembroke Pines came in and stole one legislative session, same with the bottom one. The middle where 75 was the one that Davies stole in the middle of one legislative session and then the one to the right is the one that Cooper City stole, that we actually got into litigation with them, that's where the fast food restaurant is and we got into a fight with them, CVS also, and that's what they stole one legislative session. And it was during this time, is exactly that Representative Stark said, that Broward County and the delegation made a conscientious decision, we have to stop this because, you know, it's destroying viable municipalities with great tax base, with great people and, you know, so the town is going to want to make a concerted effort in the future if this is not stopped by the legislature and Broward saying, we're not going to allow this, you know, let's let things be, we're going to be submitting bills every single year and asking for your help and, you know, and Senator's help, Senator Book's help in sponsoring a local bill to get back our property that was stolen from us. And so, you know, from a legal standpoint, it's got to work both ways and, you know, if we're both on good behavior and say, keep the legislator out of it, your boundaries are your boundaries, you know, we came to terms with this, you know, we're not going to do anything. But if they're constantly going to be making attempts on buying our properties, which they are, you know, weekly and we have video of Sam Goran saying, we're going to keep buying up as much of the town as possible, you know, then we're going to be in a situation where anyone could do the same thing and we're going to have to do what we can to protect this.
And not only when they buy the property, remember, towns and cities don't pay taxes, so it takes tax revenue away from us.
Yeah. So, Mayor, and by far, we have two wonderful representatives here today. I mean, you've always supported our interests, both you and Representative Jenny for Representative Stark, and have been incredible allies of the town. This one hit us out of the, out of the blue completely for a lot of different reasons because they tried it once before, I think it was 2005 or even sooner than that. But the two things from a legal perspective that I would ask is, I was beyond disappointed with your delegation director, beyond, okay? If you have a bill that's submitted and it was formally submitted that mentions another municipality in that bill, as a legislative director, you make sure that both municipalities have a copy of what was submitted, okay? Instead, when we did public records request, it was like pulling teeth, you know, almost like she was siding with Pembroke Pines and wouldn't give us a copy of the bill. When Sandy Harris was there, that would have never happened. The minute that bill was submitted formally by Jared Moskowitz for Pines, it would have been emailed to the town immediately and said, hey, heads up, you know, this was just formally submitted, we wanted you to know it. And still, we're, it's still today, we have to do legislative, public records requests from us, just to find out if there's any bills being submitted that impact the town. The town's name was in the bill, you know, it should be a policy decision of the Broward delegation that if, you know, two municipalities are in a bill, make sure both of them know about it and have time to respond before it gets on our agenda. And then the second and final thing is, you know, at some point, we would appreciate everyone's support in a general law, although a local bill can always trump a general, that basically states exactly what the Broward County policy has always been, which is if a municipality wants to de-annex another municipality, that both municipalities have to consent. It's just common sense and we think it would have bipartisan support and we're looking at different bills to amend this session and we have sponsors already outside of the county who would be happy to support such effort and we would appreciate your support in that as well for both the representatives.
Can I ask you a question? When this bill was filed, you did not get a copy of it?
No.
Yeah, I mean, you know, somebody, somebody really dropped the ball and, you know, I'd like to think that it was, it was an honest mistake, but I kind of doubt it, given the background, the circumstances and that should be, that person responsible should be held accountable, you know, and I don't know that, I don't know who they are, but I'm just saying, I'm speaking in generalities, you know, we really are very passionate about what we, our town, and I don't know how many of you were here in the 90s, but literally, they were, the entire town showed up, all like a couple thousand people when all this started and we didn't even have boundary, I mean, it was out into the parking lot, literally at the Pembroke Pines auditorium on Hyatt, I mean, it was that big. And, you know, we don't want this to be a town remembered. We want to, you know, we want to be left alone. We want, we want our lifestyle, this is why, the sole purpose, why we incorporate, you know, we don't want commercial, we don't want, you know, we want our animals and we want our land and less traffic, I mean, I can't make it any plainer, you know? And it's, we just want to be left alone.
It's in the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, but we take it, we take it really seriously, you know, and I just want to really emphasize that to both of you gentlemen. You guys do a great job for us up there when we're trying to get stuff done and all that, you know, you know, let's move forward, let's figure out how to make
I'm the vice chair now, so I'm going to have a little bit, I'm going to have a little bit more of an easy look at what's going, what's going on than I had before.
Appreciate that. Dee, did you have something to say?
I just want to say thank you for taking the time and showing up here. We'll see you in February and again, I reiterate exactly what they said, the disappointment was just beyond belief. Forget our disappointment, think about all the residents that kept thinking, you know, we're just dwindling down. Pembroke Pines is nothing but pirates. That's what they are. Jealous pirates, there's nothing worse in the world than jealousy. How can you be jealous of something? They've got enough, but it's not enough for them. They need to just go about their business and leave us alone as far as the law. If that law is in place where if two municipalities don't agree, we'll never have to face this again because they know we'll never, ever, 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 in a million years concede to that, never. Never. It's not going to happen. They have enough. I, I actually want back some of what they've taken. That would be nice, but I don't see that happening. And for the comments that were made on those tapes, they're a bunch of deplorable people. That was deplorable. And for us not knowing, and having to throw our attorney in there at the last minute and fight like that, and everything that Andy and Doug did, like I said, you know, we, we've always had your support. I hope it's still there, and I hope you stick with this, that no matter whatever happens, if this is what you want, I'm out of it, you leave me alone because I don't agree with this. And thank you so much again for taking the time to show up for us. Look forward to seeing you in February with a jacket.
Anyone else up here? Otherwise, I'd like to open it to the public, see if the public has any comments.
Questions?
Questions? Any public have any questions?
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. Representative Stark, we voted for you. We expected you to take our best interest forward. Now, you said that you didn't know much about it, we got to take you at your word on it, but this can't happen again, or you're going to have a whole lot of people fighting against you on the next election. Can't happen again. We also would support, hopefully, your support on what Keith is talking about, in terms of preventing them, or any of the other municipalities around us, from taking this property. But there's one other comment I wanted to add to Keith's. There's got to be some way that we can fend them off. They can continue buying property out west, which will bankrupt us. You know, they'd love to get Bergeron's property, or any of the other properties out there to add to their property base. Takes it out of our tax base, makes it less likely that we can add additional fire, additional police, or keep what we've got. If they keep whittling away at the town, we're, we're in trouble. Now, I don't know if there's a way to stop a municipality from buying property in another town, which takes from its tax base, but that's something that needs to be figured out, because whether they annex it or not, it's now off the tax rolls. So we need your help there, both of your help. Thank you.
David Kozinski, 6411 Hollaty Trail. I agree 100% with what Bob said. Please help us out. Please help us out. Thanks.
My favorite buddy. I told you to watch out for Pines, didn't I? Pines is slippery, and they're not going to stop unless our representatives stop them. It's that simple. You have to protect everybody's lifestyles. We are not city, we are not anti-everything, and we're not private little communities with gates. We have a farm lifestyle, but most important, what none of you are looking at, is we are your only water retention area in this whole friggin' area. We are one acre or more. If you do an aerial on us, we're all trees and grass. You do an aerial on everybody else, solid concrete, even Weston, solid concrete and pines. I mean, solid. You need to protect us, we're protecting you. We don't have streetlights, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have, the only paving we had is our little paved roads, and we don't have sewages, we, we just are non-impacting the land, period. So they want us, they come over, and first of all, I'm real stupid. I don't know how another town can take taxpayer's money and go into another community, another town, buy the land, invest in the land. Are they in business? Are they buying this land, and then they're going to sell it for a profit? Or are they ta, taking their taxpayers' money and doing their own game, politics and so on, and putting all this land out there, and it doesn't belong to, we don't get any tax dollars?
You're up, Gay.
They're not going to develop it, they're not going to put houses here.
You're up, Gay, sorry.
So I'm just asking you, think about it. If you can help us stop it, that's what we need to do.
Great.
Awesome. All right, seeing no public more, any more public comment, public comment is closed. And we thank you both very much for coming, we love you dearly, that was just a hiccup in the process along the way, but that little hiccup could cost us and hurt us dearly. So we're glad we caught it and got it stopped, and anything we can do or put in play to stop it from happening in the future would be greatly appreciated. So we look forward to seeing you guys in February up there for Broward Days, and thank you for coming as always. You're always welcome here, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, go right ahead. Oh, no, absolutely, and we look forward to having you up there and continue doing good work together.
Are you supplying the gloves and the hats?
Look, I don't know if you've seen my haircut, I need all the hats I can keep my hands on when it's 30 degrees outside.
Okay, well, Doug, Doug needs that, because he about froze.
Yes, no, 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 I, yeah, it checks the weather report. I brought my slick last time. You're, you're always well dressed while you're in the Capitol.
And also, just again, just want to wish everybody happy holidays, you know, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and we'll get everything moving forward.
Likewise, say hello to the wife.
Okay.
Thanks. Appreciate it. All right, now we've got I-75 express lanes. Awesome, come on up. Thank you for setting that up and calling and seeing you at that presentation and whatnot.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you council members for allowing us to come in today.
Let, let me interrupt before you start, because I don't want you getting any of the bad feedback here. So just to clarify, she's here to update us on the express lanes and the express lane issues. She's not here related, or in any way, shape, or form, related to the traffic light issue or the exits. So she's here to just kind of update.
Can I jump in on something, just real quick? We asked her to come here and give this presentation. One of the primary reasons is that this goes on our YouTube channel, and I can go to virtually anybody and say, go to this meeting on YouTube, so if you could speak into the mic really clearly, it picks up better on the...
Okay, perfect, and I will actually be going through the entire project limit and the scope of work, so that'll work perfect for your YouTube channel.
So it's a great, it's a great record, it's a great tool for us.
Thank you again, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, thank you again. Okay, so my name is Gertie St. Louis, for those who do not know, and I am the Community Outreach Specialist for the I-75 Express Lanes Project. I am here with members of my project team to provide you guys with an update in regards to the I-75 express lanes. You can go ahead and move to the next. So the I-75 express lanes is a part of the Regional Managed Lanes Network, which encompasses 95 Express, 595 Express, and the Palmetto Express. And the goal of the Region Managed, Managed Lanes Network is to improve mobility, relieve congestion, and provide additional options to the traveling motors. The I-75 express lanes project began in 2014, and it is a 15-mile-long project, which begins from Northwest 170th Street in Miami-Dade County, and extends to I-595 in Broward County. Within our project limits, we have a total of four segments, Segment AB, Segment C, Segment D, and Segment E, and I will go in further details in regards to the segments and their scope of work further into the presentation. So the overall scope of work for the I-75 express lane project consists of constructing express lanes in the existing I-75 median. They're also constructing entrance and exit points throughout the entire corridor. We're constructing direct connections to 595 Express, Palmetto Express, and the Homestead Extension of Florida's Turnpike. We're also reconstructing the interchange along the corridor, constructing soundbar walls at various locations, and also installing additional traffic cameras, dynamic message signs, and toll gantries, and also adding new signals, signage, lighting, and landscaping throughout the project. So the express lane, as I mentioned, is centered in the existing I-75 median. It is separated from the general purpose lanes by two northbound lanes, and it has two southbound lanes, and is also separated by a concrete burial wall. There's also a grassy area which separates the express lanes from the general purpose lanes, and it will also have full with paved shoulders. So this image is supposed to illustrate how motors can enter and exit the express lanes and enter into the general purpose lanes. And this image actually shows you the exact points, the entrance and exit points, and I also actually have the map here, if you guys would like it, I can put it on the back table and also provide it to you as well. So our first segment, which is Segment AB, begins from Northwest 170th Street and ends just south of Miramar Parkway. The estimated construction, completion date is winter 2018, 2019. The construction cost is $234 million. The CEI is the Cordino Group, and the design build team is Community Asphalt and the Wattman Group. So these are images of the I-75 at Hef Interchange, taken from November 2016 and from November 2017. You actually can see the changes in construction that has occurred. And the major work, it's going to be 15 bridges, 6,880 bridge length, 2.0 million cubic yards of embankment, 60,000 tons of asphalt, and the contractor quality control firm is going to be construction testing inspection. So the scope of work for Segment AB specifically is going to be reconstructing the Miami Gardens Interchange. They're also, and have, replaced the existing Bass Creek Bridge, and they're also adding new movements at I-75 slash Turnpike Interchange. So this, I don't know if you're, can, do you actually have the movements, or that's just the PDF? It's just the PDF? Okay. So in the PowerPoint presentation, we actually have it where there's actually vehicles moving and showing you which direction the cars are going. With the PDF, you're not going to be able to see that, so I mean, we are going to have an existing movement that's going to remain, which is the northbound Turnpike to northbound I-75. And then we also have an existing movement to remain for southbound I-75 to southbound Turnpike. Then we have a new movement for northbound Turnpike to northbound I-75 Express. Southbound I-75 to southbound Turnpike is also a new movement. Then we have southbound I-75 to northbound Turnpike is a new movement. Southbound Turnpike to southbound I-75 and Miami Gardens Drive is also another new movement. We have southbound Turnpike to northbound I-75, which is also another movement, new movement. Southbound Turnpike to northbound I-75, another new movement. Northbound I-75 to northbound Turnpike, which is also another new movement. And then we also have Miami Gardens Drive to northbound Turnpike, also another new movement. So we're going to move on to Segment C. Segment C actually begins from south of Miramar Parkway, and ends just south of Sheridan Street. The anticipated completion date is winter 2017, 2018, and the construction cost is $85 million. The CEI is AMP Consulting Transportation Engineers, and the design build team is Ranger Construction and the Wattman Group. So within this project, well, limit, we have two bridges, 9,000, 910,000 bridge length, 858,900 cubic yards of embankment, 39,000 length of drainage, 55,000 tons of asphalt, and the construction quality control firm is Tierra South Florida. So the scope of work for Segment C consists of reconstructing a new bridge to accommodate the new I-75 express lanes. The contractor also reconstructed the interchange ramps at Miramar Parkway, and also installed additional signalized turn lanes. The contractor also installed new sidewalks on the south side of the bridge, and signage, lighting, and signal upgrades also occurred within this limit. This image is the latest aerial image of the Miramar Parkway Interchange, taken this past November. The contractor for Segment C also constructed a four-lane divided bridge with inside and outside shoulders at Pembroke Road Bridge. This bridge also has bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides, and there's lighting on the south side of the bridge that was installed. This is the latest aerial image of the Pembroke Road Bridge, taken this November. We actually completed construction on this bridge last year, September 2016. Moving on to Segment D. Segment D begins from south of Sheridan Street and ends just north of Griffin Road. The estimated completion date is also winter 2017, 2018. The construction cost is $80 million. The CEI is Target Engineering Group, and the design build team is Ranger Construction and Wattman Group. So this segment has two bridges, 540 bridge lengths, 982,600 cubic yards of embankment, 25,000 length of drainage, 55,400 tons of asphalt, and the contractor's quality control firm is Tierra South Florida. The scope of work for this segment includes constructing ponds at the interchange, widening the Sheridan Street Bridge to the north, and replacing the existing bridge. The contractor is also installing additional signalized turn lanes, installing new sidewalks on the bridge, and upgrading signage, lighting, landscaping, and signals throughout this segment. This is the latest aerial image taken this November of the Sheridan Street Interchange. And then we move on to Segment E, which is our last segment. It begins from north of Griffin Road and ends at I-595. The estimated completion date is winter 2017, 2018. Its construction cost is $75 million. The CEI is Target Engineering Group, and the design building is Dragata USA and Parsons and Brickenhoff. So there'll be two bridges, 2,300 bridge length, 650,000 cubic yards of embankment, 29,000 length of drainage, 31,000 tons of asphalt, and the contractor quality control firm is Terracan. So within the Segment E portion, we actually have what is known as the Reversal Direct Connect Bridge that was constructed for 75 express lanes to 595 express lanes. The contractor actually had to implement temporary ramp closures and detours to allow that, for this bridge to be completed. This is an image of the future express lanes within Segment E that has actually been constructed, and this is the latest image of the I-75 at I-595 interchange, taken this November as well. We also have what was known as the Northbound Lane Bouncing Project within Segment E, and it actually began at Indian Trace and ended at I-595. The project was actually completed this April 2017, and it cost $4.1 million. The Target Engineering Group for this project, I mean, the CEI for this project was Target Engineering Group, and the contractor was Haley Engineering. So the scope of work for the Northbound Lane Bouncing Project was reconstructing the northbound lanes of I-75 to Naples from three lanes to two lanes. They also widened the designated lanes to Sawgrass Expressway and I-595 eastbound at Exit 19, from three lanes to five lanes. So now there's three lanes to Sawgrass and two lanes to I-595 eastbound. And they also installed drainage, lighting, and sign structures throughout this portion of the project. We also installed ground-mounted soundbar walls throughout the corridor. We did direct coordinations with the affected communities, and the contractor only performed the work during the day, and there was no weekend work performed as well. Shoulder-mounted soundbar walls are also being installed along the corridor. They will be completed when the roadway construction is done, and we are also doing coordinations with the affected communities. So the construction schedule, this brings us to our last slide. The project, well, the projected express lanes for the opening, for the express lanes is anticipated for winter 2017, 2018, and the construction, construction completion date is winter 2018, 2019. Do you guys have any question?
Awesome, I do.
Yes.
Where is, at which location for us here off of Griffin Road? Whether going north, if we're going northbound, where can we enter the express lane?
If you're going north...
And if we're coming southbound from 595, if you're on the express lane system and you're, and you follow it on 75 coming south, where can we exit it so you can get off on Griffin? And the same question going southbound and coming northbound.
Okay, so if you're going traveling northbound, and you would like to exit the express lanes, you exited right near Royal Palm Boulevard?
Well, where we want to, I, I think the question would be, where do we want to enter it? If we're, if we're going northbound on, if we go out here westbound, and we want to enter 75 going north, where can we enter the express lane?
All right, what I'm going to do, I'm going to show you, can you go to the second slide, I believe, so you can actually see it on, so everyone can actually usually see it?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know the presentation far better than I do.
And let me, let me give you guys a map, too.
Yeah, yeah, not a, not a problem.
Also, before I start, my project manager, Tony Castro, also would like to speak and answer your question.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members.
State your name, if you would.
My name is Antonio Castro.
Okay.
So the most northern entrance point is actually south of Griffin Road. The, the purpose of that is because as you get closer north of Griffin, you get close to 595 Express.
All right, so what we would have to do, if we want to enter this express lane going northbound, we would have to go down to Sheridan Street and get on a Sheridan Street going north on 75. Can we get on then?
Yes, because the, you can access the first entrance, or the most northern entrance point, from Sheridan Street, because the entrance point is south of Griffin Road.
Chances are, us using that is probably slim to numb, because as soon as you get to 595, you can get on the Vass Lane.
Can we still merge on like you do now? The way this, the way it's set up, that if we get on here, we don't get on the express lane, but as we enter 595 going eastbound, are we still going to be able to enter the express lane system as we do now?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so...
So we'll use it more going south... So we'll use it more going south than we would-
Right. Right. Okay.
And the advantages, or I guess what's anticipated, is the folks that are south of Griffin Road will be using the Express lanes and would minimize the traffic at the 595 interchange.
Yes.
I think the other, the other huge advantage to that for us is that it's going to take traffic off of Griffin Road onto Sheridan Road to catch that-
Northbound.
North and east.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a beautiful thing.
Yes.
And in the southbound direction, the egress point, southbound, is in the same location, just on the other side of, you know, obviously-
Okay. So if you're in Miami coming northbound, where do we have to get off to be able to exit on Griffin?
Sheridan, wouldn't it?
Well, that's what I'm guessing, but I want to hear from them.
It would be just north of Sheridan Street.
Okay. So just north of Sheridan, you can exit the Express lanes and exit on Griffin?
Yes, going northbound.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Good.
Good, good, good.
Anyone else?
Of course.
Anyone else, questions? Staff, council?
No.
Public, you have questions?
Yes, sir.
You better come up to the mic, Bob, or we won't hear it.
Can you explain what's going on at the Turnpike Interchange? Because I see a lot of work going on. I'm hoping I can get on and go in any direction depending on where I'm going, so.
Absolutely. I would be more than glad to go through those movements again. So we're adding a bunch of new movements as part of the Segment A-B project, as Gertie mentioned. If you want, if you can, go to those slides again. We can maybe, yes. Is there a particular movement that you would, that you have a question on, if it's going to be available?
I want to go west on the Turnpike. I can do that now.
No.
Going south on I-75.
Correct.
And I can go north. Can I go to the west, like towards Dolphin Stadium?
Towards the east.
East.
From I-75. And can I get back northbound? I only care about the Dolphins.
Sure.
Can I get back from the stadium going northbound on I-75?
The answer to both of those questions is yes. So there's going to be a movement that you'll be able to take I-75 southbound, and it will take you, it's actually northbound Turnpike or Heft, or north northeast. There will be a movement in that direction as well as going, coming south from the Turnpike. Like if you're coming from the stadium, you'll be able to take either I-75 Express or I-75 general purpose lanes.
And if I'm coming from the south on I-75, say I'm from Hialeah, can I go north and south on the Turnpike from there as well?
You'll be able, there's going to be a new movement that will allow you to go to the north coming from the south. However, there is no movement that will allow you to go south on the Turnpike.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions?
I actually have one more comment I want to make. I would, you know, I have to tell you that for all of the construction projects, highway construction projects, I think I've ever seen in my life, I have never seen a project that has been as successful as the 595 project opening up those lanes in the middle.
Yeah.
That used to be a nightmare going back and forth. And now, even during rush hour, it moves along very nicely. It's just a radical difference that if this project is half as successful as that, you know, you-
It joins that.
Yeah, I know. I know it does. I know it does. That's my point. So it's amazing. You know, you all have done an amazing job, and you know, it's good to see.
Now, all you need to do is direct us to the department related to our traffic light issue. And we'll be real happy.
Trying to keep it on a positive note.
Hey, listen, they are, and I said it at the front end, and they're not responsible. It's not their department. But if they can help direct us to where we got to go to help eliminate that other grief, we'll greatly-
And they call Tallahassee.
Yeah. So we plan on hitting FDOT when we go to Tallahassee or the MPO here locally, whatever we got to do. But I'll tell you right now, we fully intend to stop that traffic light, whatever it takes.
Understood. Yeah. Really appreciate the support for I-75 Express. And again, appreciate you allowing us to come here and give us, give you guys an-
Well, we appreciate you all being persistent and asking and running into you at that last meeting and saying, yes, we want to hear from you. So we thank you for setting it up and coming over and greatly, greatly appreciate it. And hopefully the residents will review this and-
And one more thing, if there's anyone that has any questions about the Express lanes and wants to get more information, you could visit our website, it's 75-express.com. Or you could visit www dot express-
Lanes.
Express lanes.
FloridaExpressLanes.com.
FloridaExpressLanes.com.
Okay. Awesome. No other questions? We're good? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you care to come back and update us on anything, feel free.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Who's in the batter cage?
I think it's going to be Russell in the batter cage in just a minute. Yep, he is. Recognition City of Tamarack, whatever. Well, I'm going to pass it over to Russell since he deals with them on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to present to you two fine gentlemen from the City of Tamarack, Levant Sokajulo and Jim Twigger from Tamarack IT. The City of Tamarack, who's one of our partners, as you know, for our IT services, has been providing that service for quite some time now. This is the second year that I'm aware of that they've won this very prestigious award. It's a national award from the Center for Digital Government, which is, bills itself as a research and advisory institute. And basically what they do is they recognize cities using technology to enhance citizen engagement, transparency, and improve citizen services. So this, they were one of the first place winners, along with cities like Los Angeles, California, Virginia Beach, Virginia, a couple of other cities. And as I said, I believe this is their second time winner. Is that correct? And they were recognized for their overall excellence, security measures, and collaborations and consultancy with other cities. So I think that's a direct correlation to their relationship with us. So I think we're one of the reasons why they won the award. So I'd like to take a little credit for that. But again, I'd just, I'd like to present them to you, so. Levant, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Levant Sokajulo. I'm the IT Director for City of Tamarack in Town of Southwest Ranches. And I want to introduce, before I say anything else, one of the architects of our success, Mr. James Twigger. He's our Assistant IT Director, and he manages most of our relationship with Southwest Ranches. It's been, it's been a couple of years now. I think we're going into our fifth year in our mutually rewarding relationship. And we continue to enjoy working with all of you. And we hope that you also enjoy the relationship as well. And we're, I think it sets a great example of inner local cooperation and engagement. And we look forward to making this a long-lasting relationship and make it mutually beneficial for all of us.
Awesome. Well, we thank you on your awards and winning in your positions, and it's been an honor and continue to be an honor working with you all. And thanks for all you do for us. Unfortunately, you couldn't help us with our broken line the other day that got underground. So anybody else want to jump in here? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all the work and effort that you all put into it. I have to, I just, I have to go back and reminisce a little bit, just so that the public appreciates how much what all you have done. I remember when I first got on the council here, we had our servers in-house. They were already old. They were already past life. They died. We lost a huge amount of emails, and important information was just lost, never recovered. It was a disaster. We went out and got another company. It was a disaster. They did fine. They did fine. But it was, it was not good. It was, response time was terrible. Issues did not get resolved. It was, it was a terrible thing. You guys, Andy, we appreciate it. I have to give you some acknowledgement here because you made the connection.
And we wouldn't have you if it wasn't for Andy.
Yeah, so we very much appreciate that. But you guys have stepped in. The transition was smooth, and it's been smooth ever since. It became from, it came from what was, at one time, probably the single biggest headache of this town to something that we don't even think about anymore, which is a beautiful thing. And we thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me-
Yeah, I just, I can't add any other accolades other than, you know, thank you. You know, I just want to say that, you know, it really works.
Our pleasure. We look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor. Levant, Jim, I just want to say thank you and express my thanks to you. I know Russell handles most of these issues now, but the fact that this has become, as Councilmember Bright Cruz alluded to, is just an invisible issue to us at this point. When I got here, I won't talk about the other vendor, but I will tell you that there probably wasn't a day that went by where I didn't want to pick up my computer and throw it out the window. And I know, and I just, I heard some, you know, some noise over here. I know the staff that was here then remembers. And it's amazing how quickly you can almost learn to take something like that for granted. But I thank you both for your efforts.
Our pleasure. We look forward to working with you.
I think the only thing I would tell you is, anytime there's a way to speed us up, just keep us in mind.
Absolutely.
So I know every once in a while I hear about lags or things you're a little slow, but I think that happens anywhere and everywhere sometimes. And I know that technology still continues to change on a fairly regular basis. So if there's a whisperer in our ears, say, hey, it's going to cost you a little more money, but we can make you faster, or whatever. I think they want to know about it, so.
Definitely. We'll work with the administration. Thank you.
Greatly, greatly appreciate it. Thanks again. Public comment. Keith, you're up for reading, or?
Yeah, we have two speakers tonight. The first speaker is Mike Hanley. And the second speaker is Noel Hollingsworth.
Mike Hanley, 50th place. I haven't been here in a while, probably because of health considerations. But I apologize, and I wanted to compliment the council, the city staff, and Andy, and everybody that was involved in the recovery from Irma. I think it was a wonderful job. You did a good job, and I was very pleased with the results in my neighborhood. The second issue is, I, again, I apologize for not being cognizant of what has been going on about stoplights. But it seems to me we need to make Weston Road on the western side where it meets Griffin as a right turn only. I know Mr. Hartman has brought that up. I would like to reiterate that. And the second one is, it seems like in the daylight, you can't, because of the school during the week, and because of the churches on Saturday and Sunday, you can't seem to get from west to east on Griffin Road. If you get stopped at Bonaventure, I guarantee you, you get stopped at Griffin Road when it hits to Weston. And it seems like all the Weston traffic comes out in the daylight, and you get stopped again at this light going on the top of 75. And by the time you get through that light, you get stopped again with all the traffic coming west, or east, or west, I'm sorry, from Volunteer and Griffin Road. And you can't get on I-75 going north. We've got to do something. Get rid of the stoplights or increase the flow of traffic somehow for the poor guys trying to get to the east from Griffin Road west.
Thank you, sir.
Nice seeing you.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. As far as the communications of the website, it's slow as a dog. That needs to be speeded up, going from, getting up to the homepage and then going from page to page to page and they're digging down. It's just as slow, each one. So if something can be done there, as the mayor said, if it costs a few dollars, okay, let's do it. Anyway, the main thing I wanted to talk about is FEMA. They did a good job cleaning up, only it was mainly Learn While You Earn crews that did the cleanup. And they left a lot behind. But on the last pickup on 199th, they did clean up real good and took 99.999% of all of the debris with them.
Amazing.
And, you know, because the homeowners got out there and said, you missed some. You know, anyway, here's a rake. They didn't have their own rake. So anyway, but what I wanted to talk about was the communication level between the town and the residents. On 199th, we were, I was told, I was told that pickup, final pickup would be between the 24th and the 4th FEMA pickup. Well, today I find out it didn't start till the 4th, the final pickup. Well, I was also told that after the 4th, it'd be regular bulk pickup. So I passed the word up and down the street, don't put out more than 12 yards, or you're going to be charged, which sort of amazed everybody. What do you mean charged by cubic yard? Never saw anything about that. So that's one communication problem the town has, is that there's going to be a charge for any yardage over 12 yards. The second thing is that we now have all these piles out there, and there's no bulk pickup for vegetative material, only for the household white goods. And almost no one has white goods that were put out. So we didn't see a truck on 199th unless it snuck through real quick. But we do have all of these 12-yard piles out there. And so it's not coming back in the yard. It's going to stay out there. And we're going to add 12 more for the next pickup. So that's going to be 24 yards. And no one had better see a bill because you missed the pickup that the town staff told me, which I passed along to everyone else, that regular bulk pickup began this week on our street, this Wednesday. The second is-
Go ahead.
The second thing is about trash, regular trash and recycles. When we got the new contract with Waste Pro, I told the council, I says, I wonder how long it'll be before they start screwing up royally. Well, after the last meeting, till now, they have missed three Wednesday pickups for trash, garbage, and picked it up on Thursday. Well, Thursday's not our pickup day, Wednesday is. So they have missed three pickups out of the four or five that have been since the last town council meeting. And today, well, yesterday, besides missing the garbage pickup, they also missed the recycle pickup. So we didn't get anything on 199th. This morning, they came by at about 6:30 and picked up the garbage. And then about 10 o'clock, they came by and got the recycles. When they picked up the recycles, they left all the carts in the middle of the road. And if there was a white line down the middle, that's where the carts would have been. So everyone had to drive this way down 199th.
Wrap it up.
Yeah. So one of the kids in the neighborhood went down the street throwing the carts off the side of the road on his bicycle, which was very nice of them. But we have a problem now with Waste Pro equal to the problem we had with Waste Management. And I'd like to see that resolved because supposedly in this contract, there are now penalties. Let's see if they're any good. Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. All right. Board reports. We have any board reports?
Bob Hartman, Chair of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board. We've, we've had a number of conversations that resulted in motions for recommendations to the council. So I want to spend a couple of minutes and go through them with you. I know you're all aware that we've got some challenges on the roads that have canals right next to the road. And those challenges have been compounded by the guardrails that have been put in over the last couple of years. I mean, everybody applauds the guardrails, and it's a great thing, but it's, it's made a problem a little bit worse. At a number of locations, and I don't believe it's just on, in the Sunshine Ranches area, I think we're, we'll probably have the same problems on the west side as well over time. But the problem we have is folks under those situations have no place to put their bulk. So they put it up against the guardrail on that little strip of dirt. The machines come along, they pick up the trash, the bulk, and they leave a little hole that gets a little bit bigger and bigger each time. And it also undermines and erodes the banks, and over time- And it also undermines and erodes the banks, and over time, you've got bank problems, which we have, and the trash is falling into the canals, which is a whole set of new problems. So, the recommendation is that when new houses are built under those site-specific conditions, they put a pad in for their bulk to save our, and from what I understand, these are all Southwest Ranches right-ofways, they're not Central Broward, they're our right-ofways. It's protecting our right-ofways against continued damage. So, we had recommended that on new construction, and I'm only talking new construction, it doesn't necessarily apply on the east, because I know in 172nd, and I'm sure we're going to be putting in more barriers over time, because we need them. But new construction be required to put up a barrier that is of appropriate size for the specific site. You know, we were talking about eight by 12, we were talking about all different things, but if there's only four feet wide of dirt behind that guardrail, you can't put an eight-foot wide slab. So, that would have to be reviewed and approved by the town engineer for new construction. As well, we had recommended that the engineer draft some guidelines to put these things in, you know, how much concrete, how thick, whether wire or steel or what have you is required in it. Again, placements, things like that. So, it's really two pieces, a required slab for new construction and guidelines to go along.
And get with whatever drainage district that applies to also.
Of course. Of course. So, that was regarding the canal banks and the slabs that we were recommending. The other piece that we brought up as well is really before the hurricane. The hurricane contributed to the damage to the signage and striping on Griffin Road, but it's really bad now. A lot of the signs that indicate the curves in the road way out west are gone. The traffic attenuators that were put up when the motorcyclist was killed, they're gone. We've got that hazard right back again. If you remember, there were three sticks that are stuck into the ground that reflect like crazy to let people know as they're coming down the road, car, truck, you name it, motorcycle, that that's coming. All that stuff has disappeared, and as well, the striping on the road, the sleeping cops on the road, all that stuff really needs to be reviewed by the county. So, we're making the recommendation of the council to engage Broward County to come out and do a site survey and start replacing that stuff, because it's really needed. Safety, 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 safety. The last piece is, and this really relates to safety in a whole bunch of dimensions. If you live out west, we knew the school was coming. It's bad now. When I go left in the morning, sometimes I wait, and I'm not exaggerating, up to 10 minutes, because the traffic is so heavy. That's contributed to backups now with the light at 27. It used to be, a couple of years ago, that maybe one or two cars would park on, you know, not park, but sit on those middle stripes. Now, it goes back to the bend in the road, because there's so much traffic. The thing we didn't anticipate is the new church that's out there. With one lane in each direction on Sundays, the road comes to a halt. The cops that are out there directing traffic don't take into consideration half a mile down the road, they just do this until the line ends, and it really swamps Griffin Road with traffic.
Let me throw one question in the middle of that. Is the light issue out there related to that church?
It has not been resolved at all.
Okay, so, Andy, or Robert, or whoever, the light issue, and it's been quite a while now, I'm told, is not resolved at that church yet.
Right.
I'm going to give you more times, so don't worry. Steve, you aware of it, or no? I mean...
I'm not aware of any progress on it.
Okay, well, too much time has passed for that problem not to be fixed already. So, I'd like an update, or the council to be updated on where we're at on that particular issue, because that's a huge problem out there.
It takes your side away when you drive past.
Yeah, you blind you.
Blinds you, yeah. But, you know, we began, Country Estates, I came to you two years ago and asked for the town to set up a resolution and start pushing to widen Griffin Road out there. I think most of you are aware that we had a very significant traffic accident with a cyclist, I believe a week ago. Girl was very seriously injured. If we had bike lanes and a wide road, I think that the probability of that accident would have diminished considerably. We need it, between the traffic that the schools put on it, just the general growth in traffic, the traffic that the Segadora Church has put on there, and one of the things we haven't been thinking much about lately is the new park they're essentially putting in out at Everglades Holiday Park. They are widening the bridge right now. They are going to significantly add to the traffic count that goes there, and I think it's great, I love that park, I go there all the time. But I don't think people are going to come down 595, I don't think they're going to come up Pines Boulevard or Sheridan Street to go to that park that's at the end of Griffin Road. If they get off I-75, they're coming straight up our street. And I can see Saturdays and Sundays now, on top of the church traffic, becoming a nightmare, because that park is very busy as it is. I go over there a lot, and both the front and back parking lot are full now. They're going to expand the parking lots in the back. So, if they add another capacity for a few thousand more cars, that's going to be a few thousand times two trips on Griffin Road. So, Country Estates asked, now the Drainage Committee is asking, we voted on a recommendation for the town to push, I don't know whether it's the MPO, or it's the county, or it's the gentleman here who, right now, would probably deliver anything we asked. But we've got to get pushing on this, because y'all know about the fatalities, we've got the guardrails in, fantastic, but west, we need more work on that road, because it's dangerous, it needs the bike lane, traffic is horrendous. I remember when Laurie Parrish was here on...
All right, wrap it up.
Oh, well, I remember when Laurie Parrish was here, when she sat on the Broward County Commission, and she said there was no traffic on Griffin Road. I'd love to talk to my friend Laurie about this, because she was about, mm, well, anyway, she was way off. It's really bad now. So, we would appreciate your support, both from the Drainage Committee, on behalf of the town, and as well, Country Estates, to really start to push on the road widening project that's very necessary. Thank you.
Okay, now. Any other board reports? Seeing no additional board reports, board reports are closed. Councilmember comments. Gary, you want to go first?
Sure, I'd be very brief here. First off, thank everybody for coming, and wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever it is, whatever it is you like to do, George. So, you're giving me the eye.
He's going back to Iceland for Christmas.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just want to just let you and everybody know that there's hazmat in the park on the 13th of January, so if you've got some tires, batteries, and motor oil. Andy, is the shredder going to be there on the 13th, or is that, there's a question mark on that?
Yes, we do expect to have the shredder on location that day.
Okay, all right. So, and we've got the free shredder service, so you bring out your personal stuff, you know, drop it in, shreds it, it's a great little perk that Broward Sheriff provides for us. And the other thing I want to mention is, I never thought I'd see the day when I'd see Noel complaining about a slow website. Did you get a computer? You actually got a computer, you didn't have to go to the neighbors. So, I just let that, put that on the record and let that go out there.
What he doesn't know enough about the internet is it may be his own house service, and not the service of the website of the town.
You mean, he's probably got...
So, Bob, you might have to educate him a little bit.
Anyway, I just thought I'd make a note of that, because over the years, that's all we've heard, so, you know, a little tongue-in-cheek right here. And that's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Dee?
Well, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody. Glad to see that you made it out. I would like to say thank you for the staff, for the wonderful Christmas party that we just had here at Town Hall. It was great, it was wonderful. All those involved, you did a wonderful job, and thank you. The volunteer fire department, you did a great job with the Santa Run, from what I hear. I hear you've really traveled north now. You know, you've gone all the way into the, what's it called, Weston? So, I hope you did good for yourselves, as well as servicing all those kids. I can speak honestly for myself, that I know two of them had a great time, and they enjoyed I think that's about it. Just happy holidays to all my colleagues and friends, and I hope you enjoy it, enjoy the big babies, Mr. Bright Cruz, as well as the little babies. That goes for everybody, and if I don't see you, like I said, have a wonderful holiday. That goes for you too, Marty. You've got to be paying attention over there. Really, no complaints, like I said. Sandy, my hat's off to you. I know you all pulled up at Town Hall, what did you think? Isn't it pretty? Everybody say, ooh?
Yeah, thank you.
And ah?
Thank you, Dee.
It looks great. Good job, Sandy. Thank you.
Okay. Steve, you up next?
Sure.
Make it cute.
You all did a very nice job of being brief. Sorry, I'm going to make up for it.
Oh.
I actually have a bunch of stuff that I want to touch on.
Okay.
So, the lights and traffic, I wanted to touch on a couple of things there. I did hear back from Scott Brunner at Broward County. As far, Mike, as far as the turn at Weston Road, that right turn only, that's a recent change that they made, the way it is. I know we're not happy the way it is, but they've got to build up some time to look at it and see how traffic flows before they're going to make any changes to that. So, we'll keep after that, we'll, you know, continue to talk to him about that, but I don't expect any change in the immediate. Just don't shoot the messenger. That's kind of where we're at on that. I do have some good news for another location in town, though. Scott also did an assessment of the traffic that is now going into 190th. And initially, his thought was that there was not going to be enough traffic there to put in a left turn lane. However, from this first study they did, they're going to do another one, because we wanted him to do it when school and everything was in play. So, I think, and he thinks as well, that it's only going to improve the numbers and improve the need for it, but it looks like they will, they're working on the case, let's put it that way. I don't want to assume, I can't assume too much too early, but the numbers support it, and they're starting to begin working on the case for putting a left turn lane in there. Bob, I know your road is then the last one there without that, so we'll start working on that one as well. I have not, to be honest with you, I have not talked to him about that yet, try and do these things one at a time. But there's some good news there from Broward County. You know, I have to say, every time, Scott is a very resident-oriented individual, and he takes input as well as anybody I know in Broward County. And, you know, if you're listening to Scott for this, you do a great job, and I really appreciate what he does. He's, him and his staff. You know, you come up with a light that's not working, and the next day, he has an engineer out there looking at it. He does a great job. So, that's the updates with that. In spite of the harassment that Noel took, I'm going to venture on that same thing. And I will say that I do think that the website, for our town website, it is one of the slowest websites that I visit. So, if we, it just, I don't know what it is. Even the initial page popping up comes up slower than almost...
The scrolling.
Okay, well, we may want to, we might want to just...
Tweak it.
Just a little feedback.
Listen, if it costs a little more money, we're all on paper speeding it up.
The mayor said, if it just costs a little bit more money, let's speed it up.
I mean, let's just let him know right now that we're all on board with that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is public comment, and this is the only time we all get to chat and discuss things. So, I'm jumping in saying, if there's an opportunity, speed it up, let's do it.
Yeah, but Doug, Doug, not all of us use that as much as you do, so I'm okay if it takes a little more time, unless you want to pay my share.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. Well, once you start using it a little bit more, you'll see what we mean.
I don't have the time.
Okay, the next thing I wanted to touch on was the comp plan recommendations. I just want to make sure that those recommendations, the comp plan has put in a lot of time and effort into all of those recommendations. I want to make sure that there's some follow-up.
Drainage board recommendations?
The Drainage Board.
The Drainage.
Sorry, I had a comp plan on my mind for the earlier, Drainage Board, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. A lot of time and effort went into those, and, you know, I think some of, one of them at least needs to be kind of farmed out to Rod, so that he can do some research on it, and then some of the others, you know, maybe go some other paths. I think that we need to make a stronger pitch to the MPO and Broward County. They are, as Bob pointed out, they are creating a hardship for our town at the end of Griffin Road with Holiday Park. Obviously, it's a great park, and it's because they're doing great things out there, they're not doing something intentionally bad. But they are creating a situation that is going to get worse, so they need to take some responsibility for relieving.
Sooner than later.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Let's not let it get to where it's a disaster before...
Well, so, should we come up, get Keith or whatever, come up with a resolution to...
I think we should.
Push this forward? I'm going to be meeting with Cooper City and Weston anyway.
Right.
We can include that stuff, as far as getting that widened and...
And I just think we should leverage that point, that they are doing something to create more traffic, and therefore, they need to address that traffic and do something, you know, to widen the road and put a bike lane there.
Well, what I would add to that is, there's something that we can add to the, since we're going to Tallahassee for money and stuff, and it could be a little less lax year, where we might put that on the list as far as...
Yeah, this is a county road, I don't know...
I know it is, but I'm just saying, maybe we push the county to say, hey, it is Broward Days that we're going to, and the county's going to be there.
Right, right.
So, I don't know what else, or what ideas, maybe we'll poke at Keith on some suggestions and ideas.
Okay.
Moving forward to get that done, but unless we do that, it's going to sit where it is.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. I mean, I just want to, and that was my point, was I want to make sure all those things are addressed, are kind of farmed out to where we can make progress on them.
I think from a political and legal standpoint, rather than setting a resolution to the county that will be placed with all the other resolutions sent to the county, that it may behoove the town to start with requesting a meeting with Richard Tornese in the Highway Management Division, who's always been a friend of the town. And explain the situation to him, and see if he can recommend putting it on their horizon for expansion.
Okay, that's great.
Let's do it.
Would a, would a resolution help him in his effort, or is that just kind of spinning our wheels?
Let him tell us. Yeah, he'll let us know, but I'm pretty sure it would be spinning the wheels right now.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I think instead is, we can, they're going to require a couple of things. They're going to require traffic counts on that roadway to see if it truly is increased. They can pay for it, so it's good. So, I think the first step is saying, we believe it's warranted, we would like you to do, you know, traffic counts and start putting this on your plan. So, I think there are ways of...
Okay, thank you. I think one of the things that, you know, anytime you go through a situation like with the hurricane, I think it's important, well, let me say this. First of all, I think we did an amazing job. Sandy, the administration as a whole, everybody pitched in. I think we did an amazing job of getting things cleaned up, handling issues as they inevitably will come up, as quickly as they possibly could, and keeping our costs down, which is also critical. And so, I think overall, the process was handled exceptionally well. Anytime you go through a process like that, though, I think it's critical that we, when we come to the end, that we spend some time trying to identify those things that we could have done better, because let's face it, we can always improve, we can always do better. And so, I have, I sat down, Andy and I have talked about it, I sat down with Russell. One of the things that I personally, both as a council member and as a resident, was most frustrated about was, and it was brought up again tonight, was the communication of the pickups to the residents. It's a difficult thing to communicate, because it's in flux the whole time. So, I... So, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna minimize that. I know that there, there, it's not like you can come up with a concrete plan at the beginning and stick to it through the whole process. It just, it does not work that way. However, I think that what we do need to do is come up with a tool that is updated, say on a weekly basis, of, "This is our best, um, estimation of the future pickups, when they're gonna begin, when they're gonna end, what they're gonna include," you know, um, whether it includes, uh, you know, uh, just small limbs, whether it includes stumps, whether it includes, uh, damaged building material, um, that should be in there. And, and, and so that we, as council members, or as residents directly, can go to one place and get the most current information, not having to ask neighbors or, um, or anything else. We, we have a place where we can send our residents, where they get the most up-to-date information. It should be updated minimally once a week, but as we learn things, it, it, you know, it should be, uh, updated, uh, as recent as it, as it makes sense, um, but certainly at least once a week. And, um, and I would like to see it, and Russell and I talked a little bit about this, in, in a kind of a graphical form, that's a picture easy to see, just some rows, you know, a row for maybe each, each pickup, so that, uh, so that it's easy to see, maybe easy to print out. And, um, and I'd like to see at least a link or something right on the homepage where, where it's easy to get to. What's that?
On the slow page.
On the slow page, yeah. But I'll tell you this, no, you know, it's true, that's, I know, it's kind of a tongue-in-sheesh thing, but the truth of the matter is, is that when the storm hits, um, everything slows down. People lose their internet, there's, all of a sudden, rather than using their internet at home, they're using a hotspot, you know, that has, you know, limited capacity, um, or trying to get it here, there and everywhere. So it, it does need to be right up front where there's a minimal number of pages that you go through before you get to it.
You're done with this topic? I wanna answer you.
Okay. I think I'm done with that topic, yeah.
All right, thank you, council member, if I may. Just, there's been some accolades and there's been some criticisms and probably both, both are correct and deserved as far as the hurricane cleanup and the process. I can tell you from a staff standpoint, our greatest challenge was, was the communication. We realize that's our greatest opportunity for improvement going forward as well. Part of that is we're trying to coordinate with our garbage collector and our emergency service collector and our monitoring firm and FEMA, and you're dealing with constantly changing conditions and in some cases, nomenclature. You know, what's, what's, what's a second pass? What's a final pass? What's, you know...
Right.
What, what those things mean and understanding that created a challenge. So, we are working on that actively. I can tell you that Sandy did send out an email this week to all the HOA presidents, soliciting from the associations their input in, in what we did right, what we did wrong. So we are, we're actively, I just, you know, while you were talking about it, I wanted to address it and say, "We recognize that's, that's our greatest opportunity for, for improvement. That's where, if, if you're gonna say that we dropped the ball on anything, that, that would be the, the, the spot. We, we certainly don't wanna do that again. We wanna make sure, while we don't ever wanna get hit within a storm like that. We know it's inevitable eventually. We wanna be better prepared, we wanna better communicate that, that message." So we're, we're soliciting that input in order to do that.
Great. I, I very much appreciate that. I will say, I don't think the town dropped the ball at all on that. I just think it's an area that we can improve, that's all. Another area of communication that I would like to see us improve on is, um, with code. One of the, one of the biggest issues that I hear, and I'm sure we all hear it, um, is that there is a code action in place. Somebody reports something going on, code takes action with it, and then, you know, we enter the cone of silence for like ninety days, you know, before any real action happens because it takes that long to give time to the property owner to resolve the issue, to go before the magistrate, to, you know, do the, do the dance and the whole, the whole nine yards, I won't dance for you tonight, but, um, do the whole dance, uh, for you. And, and so, um, the tendency for anybody, human nature, is to feel like code's not doing their job. You know, that's, that's, that's the tendency, is to think, "I, I reported it, they told me they were gonna do something, I don't see anything. It's been a month, over a month, nothing." You know, what are they doing? They're not doing their job. And, uh, and that's, that's, that's human nature, that's the tendency. And so, uh, getting back to the website, I would, I would like to see a, um, a spot on the website where all the active code cases are listed, and I've talked to Robert about this, um, and Robert is enthusiastic about doing this, so he's certainly not, um, you know, against this in any way. But, uh, where all the active code cases are listed, so that once again, they're not getting information second or third hand, they can go directly to, um, that location, they can look up their case, they can see that, okay, this is going to be heard by the magistrate next week. Or, this is, uh, you know, during the period where we're giving them thirty days to resolve the issue and, you know, we're gonna, we have to, we have to wait that. But the residents get direct impact, get, get direct feedback on where it is, and, um, I think that that will not only, um, improve, uh, the communication with the residents, but I think it'll also go a long ways towards letting people appreciate what code is doing and what staff is doing. Yes, Andy?
I'm gonna give you the perfect example of exactly the point you're making. The mayor was talking about the church lighting before and how much time has gone by and how something should've been done by now. It is in the process. The magistrate has rendered a decision on that. They have until January eleventh to correct. If they do not, they'll begin a fine of a hundred and fifty dollars a day at that point. So, it's exactly the example, the mayor who attends virtually every code hearing wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, you can't keep up.
And, and it's certainly, uh, no fault of his.
Right.
But it's, it's something where he said, "Okay, what's going on with that? What hap-"?"Well, it is in process." So, I think it illustrates your point, that there are issues like that that are moving forward that, that people may not be aware. So, uh, you know, Robert and I'll get with that and with, with Russell, we'll look for some opportunities there as well.
I have a question, if I could, Steve.
Yep.
Um, when you're talking about publishing this in the newsletter, are you talking about any, every code call or something that's actively being pursued? In other words, my neighbor's dog is barking incessantly or gets out and it's in Robert, and does he, are you talking about reporting something like that? Or, let's say the, there's nothing to it.
Right.
Like, would that appear where you're talking about?
No, no. What I'm saying, first of all, I, I would like to see it on the website, not in the newsletter. So that there, so it's more up-to-date.
Okay.
All the time, so...
All right.
But, I would only see something listed on there where there is an active case, where a case has been opened, code has gone out, looked at it and said, "Yes, we've got a problem. We need to proceed."
I can, I can get behind that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if you just meant every...
No, 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 no. If, 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 if code goes out there and they determine that there's not a case to proceed, they, the best of my knowledge, they, they will get back with the resident, they will inform them of that, so that the resident knows that there's no further action. There's no reason to put that on the website. There's no reason to have that out there.
Okay. Yeah, well, most of the complaints now are anonymous, is that correct?
Well, if, if, if it's anonymous, uh, you know, then, the only thing I can say is that if it's an active case, it should be out there. If it's not and we can't get a hold of them, we can't get a hold of them, you know.
I have a suggestion on, on this one, just because I deal with this every day. Um, I, I would urge the council to look at the city of Fort Lauderdale's website between now and next meeting and go to their section on code enforcement and tracking code enforcement items. They do it with, uh, you can put in directly property address or you can actually circle an area and we'll show you within that area all active code violations. And on each matter, it will tell you what was done, when an officer responded, it doesn't say the name of a complainant or anything like that, but it will tell you straight out if it was closed or if it's an open case. It's not directly on their website, it's a separate program, so it's not slowing down their website. It, it's a jump link to their other system that does it. I'm sure it's a paid system that if the council likes, we, we should look into, but it is one of the better systems that I've ever seen. So if you lived in, in Rolling Oaks, for example, you could put a circle over all of Rolling Oaks and it would list every single code action open within that, uh, community. And you could click on each one and it would tell you the status of the matter. And when it's closed, it says, "Closed, no further action."
Right.
So, you know, it's something to look at, um, between now and the next January meeting to see if that's sort of the system that you're looking for.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I would love to have something like that. I don't know, um, and I think we should check that out, appreciate that. I personally, if we can get to that, that would be great. I personally would rather get something out there sooner, even if it's just throwing up a spreadsheet or something that people can look at and sort through and find, um, just initially, just so we get something out there sooner. But, um, if we can get to what Keith is talking about at a reasonable price, that's even better.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah. Um, and then, I have one other item.
Time's up.
That's, that's my item. That's my item. Time's up. I have been on this council for eleven years at the end of my term. It'll be twelve years. And, uh, I have got to tell you all that, um, I, I came on this council to serve this community, but you all have served me more than I have served you. And I mean that, uh, I gotta be careful here.
Thank you very much.
You, you all have, uh, taken in my family, been friends to my family, um, and, um, this town means more to me than I think, I think, uh, I can express here. And so the last twelve years have been exceptional to me and it's been a true honor and it's been a, uh, a very special, uh, time for me personally and for my family. When I got on here, my kids were younger and they were excited about it and now they're all, I won't say old, getting myself trouble for that, but they're all off and married and grown up and, and have families of their own. And, uh, so it's been, it's been a great, it's been a great eleven years. I'm sure it's gonna be a great twelve years when this term ends. With that said, I have made a decision that at the end of this term, I am not going to seek reelection, um, for the following term. I wanted to get that out early enough so that, uh, those that might want to, uh, take this seat in November were aware of that and could make any plans that they, uh, wish to make. With that said, I want to say, uh, one other thing, and that is that, uh, I'm not going anywhere. This is my home and, uh, um, this is where I plan to stay for many, many more years. And, uh, I think that a break from the council will be good for me personally, 'cause I think it'll give me the opportunity to see the town through the residents' eyes again. It's a different view than when you get to sit up here and, and have some control, um, out there. I know it's, it's more frustrating 'cause I sat out there for many years. And, uh, so I think that'll be good, uh, good for me personally. I think it'll be good for the town to, uh, always a little bit of turnover on the council, brings in new ideas and brings in new, uh, um, fresh, fresh ways of looking at things. So I think it'll be positive for the town as well. But, uh, I'm not going anywhere and, um, and, uh, and I hope to run for the council, um, again, in the future, um, because it's where my heart is and it's where, uh, I, I have really enjoyed the last eleven years. So, um, um, I wanted to make that announcement tonight. I, uh, I don't, there's no way, good way to wrap that up, but, uh, you all are very special to me and, uh, and I appreciate, uh, all the time that, uh, you've, you've, you've spent here and, and given to me. Thank you.
Did he have permission for that, huh?
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, but you're Mr. Boots. I mean, when we go to meetings and different things, you know, you always know you're gonna walk in with boots.
Always got my boots on.
So you're gonna be Mr. Boots. We'll have to re-nickname you.
Thank you.
I hope that means you're coming to Tallahassee this year.
Hey, Doug alone, you his ugly coat he wore. Oh, that wasn't an ugly coat, was it? Steve, it was an ugly coat.
Personal opinion.
He looked like something out of the old John Wayne mafia.
Yeah, coat, actually. It was a long, black trench.
Long, black leather trench coat. They call it a slick, I think, but...
Yeah, slick.
You don't get much time to wear something like that. Only a lot of years, I said. I'm gonna take advantage of it, so. Been hanging in my closet for I don't know how many years, so...
Well, at least we're not losing you to Colorado.
No, I'm here.
It's too cold out there.
It's too cold, it's too cold.
All right, Fred, so you done, Steve, or you're good?
Done, I'm done.
Okay. Uh, Freddie, you're up.
Okay, uh, I started off the, the way he finished his, because he stole all my, my top.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Because, uh, I feel just like Steve have, I've been on the council since it started and I've enjoyed it, you know, uh, it's hard to sit here and describe, you know, the feeling you have up here and the, the support you get from your people, but, uh, I think it's for my, my time to do the same thing that Steve's saying. I don't intend to run again. Mainly, my is health more than you. I know what yours, but, uh, I think as far as that is my health. My health is, uh, it's not bad. I'm probably, uh, older than most people in this room, uh, but I thank God is, my health is good. My health is very good. I've had a little bit of problem. They have these things now, I got one right here. They just put a, a, a new heart, I mean, there was, not a new heart, but a pacemaker. Pacemaker, which is, uh, like a new heart. Uh, but my health is good. But, uh, like I say, it's, I, I think I've been here since it started, you know, and I, I really think, and I think they, they's always said that, that there's a lot of people out there, we've, a lot of young people out there that, uh, that would do it. But, uh, and, uh, I, like I say, is I don't intend to run again, but I, I wanna tell you this, I have, I have really been honored to serve you people, as much time as I've served you people. And, uh, I ain't going anywhere either. This has been my home, ever since, uh, you know, even before we came to town, this has been my home. And, uh, my wife and I, and it's been a very good place for me to raise my family. And it's been, uh, God sent for, uh, to be able to do what I have done and raise my family. I've, I've had a very, uh, opportunity and a, a probably, a lot of people won't get this chance, but I was able to buy property out here back when, he was able to buy property back here. So I was able to, be able to raise my family in one place. And, uh, like I say, I, I live there, my son lives there, my grandson lives there, so it's been nice. But, um, anyway, I just wanted to just say that, uh, I've been, enjoyed serving you, but, uh, I don't plan to run again. Thank you.
Oh.
Wow, you guys, true top of the night, man. That's, that's, that's tough. But, uh, no, it's not a trifecta. But what I will say is I will welcome Steve to run against me in two years, so, uh, or anyone else that wants to run. Unless I drop dead or I'm not enjoying this or having fun anymore, that would be the only exception I would as far as stepping aside or stepping down. So, I intend on finishing my term and as long as I'm healthy and still here, I'll, I'll run for the next term. So, I know, I can't tell you how many people have called me over the years and said, "You need term limits, you need term limits." I said, "Listen, I tried that the first year I got in office and I was shot down, but if you wanna bring it forward, you go right ahead, 'cause I'm done, done with it." So, I can't tell you how many people said, "When we don't want you there, you won't want, you won't be there." But if we want you, we wanna be able to keep you." So, uh, I left it alone in that regard. But I wanna say, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever, whatever you celebrate, uh, may you have a happy and joyous one. Thank you for... Thank you for coming out, we greatly appreciate you all coming out. That's why we have two meetings a month, if you can't make one, maybe you can make the other one. So, but as far as that moving forward, you guys, thanks very much for all your contributions and being up here and helping and being a part of this team, and we've been pretty damn good together. So I want to say thank you to all of you. Other than that, let's get moving on this agenda. Let's see, legal?
Legal, legal. You forgot legal.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council. Thanks to Vice Mayor, oh, I guess not Vice Mayor, supposed to be Vice Mayor, Council Member Bry Cruz, and obviously, who will have for three more years, Council Member Fisukelli, for incredible service to the community. A lot of people don't know what it's like being in your shoes now, especially with the amount of regulations on political figures that have occurred in the last 17 years since even the town was formed, and how much you're under a microscope, from financial filings to every loan that you ever want to take personally, to every dollar of income that comes into you, that everything is reported and everything is an open book, and I don't envy any of you for doing it, because it's very difficult. And until you're on this side, it's hard for people to understand how difficult it is, so.
It's like going to a productologist.
Thank you all for that. In regards to other issues, we are working with Southern Strategies on our two bill items to look for a vehicle to put them on. One is the, when we spoke about, about not allowing a de-annexation unless the, both municipalities consent. The second one actually Bob Hartman brought up during our conversation, which is, you can't buy property within another municipality without their consent. Both those bills have been drafted, both were tendered to Southern Strategy, and both are looking for vehicles to go on. And I actually worked today with some of the representatives and senators outside of our area to garner support, because it really has to come from outside this area. It is turning into political season again in 2018. A lot of us get flyers on our dais and otherwise. This one, he supports veterans, police, and teachers, really went out on a limb. And as a result, one of the things that I can say from my side is that when these political figures start coming forward, saying they're running for Senate, House, whatever the case may be, that the council should feel comfortable to put them on the spot then, to ask them where they stand on the issue of the annexation of the Town of Southwest Ranches. Because I think it's very important to ingrain at the onset with these representatives, what's going on out there, so that it's not shocking to them or a surprise when it comes up later. Other than that, things have been very quiet legally. We had a crazy month last month, because we thought we were going forward with the Pembroke Pines trial, so we were fully prepared. As a result, that didn't go forward, we're still prepared, but now we're on a lengthy legal hiatus. My 13-year-old has seventh grade midterms, so if you have any questions about the Bolshevik Revolution, feel free to ask. Other than that, I wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and because of the way our meeting's set, a Happy New Year, prosperous and healthy to everyone.
And Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'll be very brief this evening. First of all, for those of you who are hanging on the edge of your seats in anticipation of Agenda Item 20 tonight, which is the Town Administrator and Town Financial Administrator Annual Review, I have asked the council, as we have done in the past traditionally, to defer the discussion on that item into the January meeting, so that will not be a topic of discussion this evening. Second, our next meeting, because we get into the holiday break now, and Keith alluded to that in his comments, our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, will be January 25th. So certainly in the interim, I wanted to wish you all a very happy and healthy holiday, Happy New Year, certainly wish you all the best, staff will be, although we'll get a little break from meetings, staff will be here to continue to serve the town, and certainly any issues that you have or residents have, we'll be here over the holidays to do whatever we can to keep those things moving forward. So thank you all for another great year in 2017, we look forward to 2018.
Russell, for number 11.
Yes, Mayor, this is an ordinance on first reading, it's an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2018 through 2022 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this comes to you on first reading with the recommendation of approval from the LPA earlier tonight. We'll incorporate by reference all of the citizen comments made by, at the LPA item, and it's here for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Whoever got it, I don't know who got it for a second, but...
Freddie.
You got two of them, but...
I think Freddie got it.
I think Freddie got it.
I think Freddie got it.
Let's do rock, paper, scissors.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Any questions from the council on this matter? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisukelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 12.
Number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing Town Council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, item 12 through 15 is renewal of all the boards. If you, who's you, we can read them all in, and you can approve it as a package unless there's a particular one that you don't want to renew.
Gentlemen?
Read them all in.
Read them all in.
Okay. Item 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, restating the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing Town Council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date. Item 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Fire Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing Town Council members to administratively appoint board members and providing for an effective date. Item 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Recreation, Forestry, and Natural Resources Advisory Board, ratifying the board's purpose and objectives, authorizing Town Council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date. Item 16 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing Town Council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date. Item 17 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Schools and Education Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing Town Council members to administratively appoint board members, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment?
Bob Hartman, Chair of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board. There was something that I tossed back and forth, whether I should have brought it up earlier during my board report or now, and I was thinking now is the right time, maybe it's not, but you guys let me know. We were informed by Mr. Valetta at the last Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board that he was gonna step down for health reasons. Now, we're gonna see what we can do to get him to as many meetings as possible, but to be fair to him, we'd like to appoint him as either a...
Lifetime honorary member.
Lifetime honorary or, you know, emeritus member of the board, whatever terminology makes the most sense. We voted on it...
Drainage, excuse me.
Sorry?
Keith was asking what board it was, I said Drainage Board.
Yeah. You know, we voted on it, the board endorses this, and I believe that Mr. Valetta said he would agree to this type of a special status. Now, one of the things that was brought up that we want to make sure everybody is comfortable with is that we're gonna ask him to vote, we won't record his vote as part of the tally...
Official.
Official tally, but we want to know where he stands on each one of the things that we decide on, so.
Keith, how do we modify that?
I'm looking at your agenda in backup page 45 of 130, and it's actually listed as an attachment to the resolution that Vince Valetta would be the honorary member. So obviously you conveyed that previously.
We discussed it at the last meeting, and just about everybody was there.
We're covered.
It's already on.
Okay.
We'll need an additional appointment from Freddie, because Vince is your appointment.
Okay, we can do that later.
I'm not sure if that's been dealt with already, but, okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Okay, we're good, no other public comment? Seeing no additional, Vince, you wanna come up? Come on up, bud. Yeah, yeah.
He's good.
Well, he's got it.
How about if I hold it for you, Vince?
That's okay, I'm loud enough.
You turned it off. The mic died, or the battery went dead, or we hit the button?
Nope.
Swap it, over here.
Again, Mr. Chairman, my thank you for the kind words and the honorary membership into the Drainage Advisory Board. Ruth and I have been here a long time, and like Steve, we're not going away. We still will be here. This was our dream when we became an association in 1969. In any case, I thank you for the honor. I want to congratulate Steve on his retirement, and Freddie, but again, you are not going away, we are not going away, and again, I thank you for the honor.
Man, these are hard acts to follow.
I see no additional public comment, public comment is closed, back to us. Any other questions or input here, or just call the question?
Mayor, I believe we may also have an issue, I just want to bring it up regarding the Schools Education Advisory Board. I don't know if there was a change that was requested, I believe there might have been a change requested by Councilmember Jablonsky.
Okay, you had a change?
Yeah.
All right.
Wanted to move, or was it, I apologize.
No problem.
Yeah, Councilmember Jablonsky was changing his appointment to Jennifer Montgomery.
But doesn't that, doesn't that happen when we reappoint the boards in January?
Yeah, that would just be his designation now, is what he's doing.
Oh, I thought we, okay, I thought we'd do that in January.
You can, council's at large, you can do it anytime you want. So he just wants to do it now.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna move it as my pick.
Okay, so let's, tell us what the change is, and let's make sure we modify.
He has the right to do it, he announced it publicly, so we can just vote.
Okay, we can just go with the vote, all right. Call the question, please.
So did he announce the appointment?
He did.
It's for all of them? Do we need to specify that by number, all the...
No, we're good. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisukelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, 18?
18 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a single-source agreement with Advanced Modular Structures, Inc., in the amount of $256,625 to complete the fire modular project at 17220 Griffin Road, approving a budget amendment, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this, and Russell and Andy can speak better to the direct issue than I can, but I want to bring up a couple of legal issues. This is obviously the purchase of the fire modular that is required with your contract with the Town of Davie. Obviously, everyone in this town would like to have a permanent structure at some point, but based on cost, this is a unit that Miramar had been using, it has been inspected by the town, reviewed by the town, Davie has approved it for its use, which is a big deal as well, and it's used, but it's coming to you at a much reduced price as a result of it. There are two changes to note in the agreement that was online that I want to point out directly, and one is that under Florida law, when you, when a municipality spends more than $250,000 for a building, you're required to have a contractor place a performance bond to guarantee that the work would be performed. In this case, the performance bond is about $10,000 to $15,000, and that cost would be borne by the town, because they would want us to pay it on top of it. We did the legal research, and because this is not a building, but actually a vehicle, because it's a modular that can be moved, the Florida statutes is quiet on the need for a performance bond. Due to the fact that you either get the building or you don't, we don't really believe that the town's at risk for not having a performance bond in place, because the vendor won't get paid unless the trailers are on-site assembled and the like. So we were comfortable recommending to you that change to save another roughly $10,000 at the low end from the purchase. The second thing that was changed in the contract is warranty. Because it's a used vehicle, I don't know if you want to call it a vehicle or a building, a building on wheels.
Modular.
Modular. The manufacturer did not want to give any warranty at all, saying you're buying it as-is, you know, we're installing it in place, and, you know, you're getting what you're getting, it's a used vehicle. The town went back and forth with them several times, and today they agreed to a 30-day warranty. We were requesting 90, so they compromised, they went back to 30. Again, Andy has seen the structure, fire's seen the structure, so we do know what we're getting. We would have loved a longer warranty, but based on the price and all the other factors, we would still recommend going ahead, but what we recommended with two caveats that we worked with finance on, one, that the town inspect the modular by cap utilizing our building department to inspect it while it's at its present location, okay? Re-inspect the item once it's assembled at the town to ensure there's no change between when it was at the point of where it's being delivered from and the town, and then to keep an incredibly close eye on it within that 30 days in case a warranty repair is needed. Other than that, it's here for your review, and I think I covered everything.
When is this due to be installed?
The vendor's ready to go sooner rather than later, so should you, should you all approve it tonight, they'll go ahead immediately with the site plan and the permitting. I believe we were, they have 45 days from the issuance of permits, so we're potentially looking at, I'll say, three to four months realistically to have this in place.
I was just wondering if we could schedule a good rainstorm in that 30 days or not, you know?
Yeah, yeah, make sure.
The only other thing I'll add to what Keith said, because Keith gave very, very good information there, one other thing that does give us a degree of comfort is this is a vendor we've worked with previously as well.
Yeah. So it's probably gonna be installed though prior to the rainy season.
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll obviously make sure it's thoroughly inspected.
Right.
Yeah.
There you go.
And obviously, there's no ability to buy an extended warranty for this item. I know it's used.
A very used structure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Like those D?
Yeah. I see in here we have additional cost, and we also have a $6,070 cap permit fee. Is there any way we can raise the rent? Kind of recoup some of that money? Whatever. Well, 25% isn't too bad. We can't negotiate for at least 50%? Oh, okay. Hey, I'll try.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, no additional questions? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisukelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Okay, yes, number nineteen, Robert, your show.
Yeah, Mayor, if I, might just set the stage.
Go ahead.
Robert's getting his paperwork together there, cuz I think that last item might've gone quicker than expected, and I know Russell wants to call up the PowerPoint as well. If, if you all recall, back in September, we had a discussion on issues that were raised to many of you by residents on commercial businesses located in residential areas. Uh, Robert did a presentation, we came back with you some additional information. We're, we're ready to roll forward coming into the new calendar year with, with whatever direction council may wanna issue to us, and so Robert has just a, a very brief presentation to share with you this evening on, on some of the code findings and staff recommendations.
The only other, one other thing I wanna say related to this is that the back end, or what, before he's, is he gonna be at the end of his presentation with what I wanna bring up?
I think the last slide is, is, when we get to it, you'll know it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, that's the, the slide.
Alright, I just don't wanna miss my opportunity here.
It's on a slide all by itself deliberately.
Okay, alright. Robert, you're up to bat.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Uh, I would like to apologize for my voice, I've been fighting a bad cold, and, uh, my voice may not sound as good, but, uh...
We all have a cheat sheet.
Yes, sir, you have a cheat sheet. For the record, my name is Robert Soler, I'm the Code Enforcement Director for the Town of Southwest Ranches, and in front of you, you have a cheat sheet, uh, with the different slides. As Andy indicated, back on September thirteen, uh, we had a meeting, there was a number of input that was provided by the council members, as well as members of the, of the town, uh, residents perhaps, uh, in reference to the impact that the operation of, uh, these nurseries and other locations create on the, on our rural lifestyle. If you go to the next slide, we identified a number of issues at that time, and the issues remain the same that we identified. Uh, we have an increase in traffic due to commercial vehicles which operate in and out of those locations in various areas of the town. We have onsite staging of multiple, multiple commercial vehicles. Basically, we have locations where you have nurseries or perhaps open land where vehicles are staged. Basically, the people come to their location, and from there, they travel somewhere else to perform the duties that are not being performed at the location itself, creating, of course, more traffic. Uh, we also identify businesses that waste placed, uh, wa, you know, wa, with waste that was placed for the residential waste, increasing collection costs for residents. Basically, small businesses are perhaps put out things which are not allowed to be put out from, uh, small businesses, which are just gonna be businesses dedicated to perhaps a computer and a small office, not a major operation. And of course, mulching operations that have, uh, been created in different areas of the town, creating noise, uh, and a noise, you know, noise nuisance to residents. Uh, the town staff and Code Enforcement reviewed the possible opportunities in the code, and also looked at the town residents' input. Uh, we have a number of findings that we would like to present to you. Uh, the next slide indicates, the first finding is, uh, to provide with a revision of section zero-four-five, zero-thirty-C-three, basically, this area talks about commercial vehicles. Currently, you're allowed, under our code, a maximum of two vehicles, commercial vehicles on private properties. Um, and those are not related to agriculture, those are regular commercial vehicles, and we're not talking about RVs, we're not talking about recreational vehicles, we are not talking about any of those, only actual commercial vehicles that may have a sign on the outside, which are the ones that people use to travel from and their homes when they go through the business. And we feel that, based on your input, you will not increase that from two to three instead. But that will require a code change, and that will be a legal input in that regards.
Do, do we have comments now while he's discussing this, or should we wait till the end?
We'll wait till the end, I think.
Okay.
I don't know, let's, let's ask how the best you wanna do that.
It's up to you all. I have questions.
Well, let me ask you, you wanna address it each time on each one, or what?
Mayor, my, my preference would be, cuz it's a, it is a very brief presentation, and there's only a few items.
We'll do it at the end.
Just, I, I think it'll be more orderly if you just let Robert roll through it, so everybody gets their thoughts together, and then we can chew on the different issues.
In addition, our next, uh, our next recommendation is to, for the council to add as part of the list of things that we could do in a proactive basis, which is very limited at this point, and that is the way you all want it, which I understand is perfectly fine, to add the inspection of large commercial operations in a proactive way in the list. Also, we will recommend to add on a bi-annual basis a certificate of use renewal. Uh, the certificate of use renewal will cost fifty dollars, that will cover the renewal process, all paperwork, inspections. The idea behind that is to make sure that we revisit those locations that have certificate of use currently, that perhaps their business has changed. Currently, the certificate of use are issued one in a lifetime, and they're never inspected again unless we receive a complaint that requires our attention to visit those locations. So perhaps you started with a small nursery that has two vehicles, and now you have flourished to a big nursery with ten vehicles, and everything has changed in the site. That re-inspection will allow for us to revisit the location and see what has changed, and if any possibility of improvements whatsoever. Uh, and we will continue to work with the Southwest vendor to identify and eliminate collection of items related to the small business locations. On the next slide, uh, we are happy to report that the legal department has created an ordinance, which is ordinance twenty-seventeen-zero-fourteen, which was passed and approved on September twenty-eighth of this year, and that ordinance provided a number of items that clarify the code for us in terms of, of, uh, Code Enforcement. The first is to create a composting and mulching operation definition, which we didn't have in our code. The next thing that did is provided for additional conditional uses under the manufacturing and industrial district only. Uh, not to allow any other zone districts only in the manufacturing and industrial districts, to include fertilizers, recycling facilities, sanitation companies, and trash and transfer stations. Basically, those types of, uh, operations will only be allowed in a manufacturing district, not anywhere else. Currently, they're not allowed anywhere in our code. And in addition to that, it provided for limitations and a specific definition for a recycling facility. Those are the recommendations that we have so far, we'll listen to any of your questions and entertain any of you have. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I've got one right out of the gate.
Yes, ma'am.
Got a bunch.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, uh...
I'll wait for you guys.
Dee, wanna go ahead?
Well, I might have one later, too, but for right now is, uh...
Listen, as we speak, more will probably come up.
Alright, then, then the first one, the revision of section oh-four-five, oh-three-oh, uh, town code to increase the number of commercial vehicles and other agricultural that are allowed to park on the site from the maximum of two to three. Why, why would we give permission for someone to bring in another one? Sometimes it happens, they get them on there, it, it gets overlooked, kinda like Mecca said years ago, out of sight, out of mind. I'm not in favor of increasing this at all.
Let, let me tell you kinda how that one came up.
Wait a minute.
Alright.
Not at all. Uh, we're not a commercial, we keep fighting, we don't want commercial, but yet you want another commercial vehicle? I'm not voting for that.
Okay, so the conversation and thought process was, uh, with my conversation with Robert, was that there are a lot of people in town that have their own family businesses, and they have kids that grow up, and the kids get in the business. So, whether it's air conditioning, whether it's plumbing, whatever it might be. So, dad's driving one truck, employee's driving another truck, and now the kid's old enough to come in the business, and they want a third truck. That's kinda accurate.
Got the answer for that, let's call Hialeah.
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think the bottom line is that we, we have this regulation in town, right? So, we've already set the standard, if somebody comes into town and they need to get that third vehicle, then you know what? Their business is getting past a little mom and pop business. It's becoming now an actual commercial business. They need to go find a commercial location where they can store their commercial vehicles, they can have their employees go to, rather than going through in and out of our neighborhoods, you know, go to a commercial location and pick up the vehicle and go out to work. I, we, we...
I don't disagree with the argument, but let me tell you, roll you back a little bit. We have a lot of people in town that have a lot of heavy equipment to keep it at their house.
Mayor, we, we have, we have a regulation in place.
I am?
Because, because people are not following the regulation, perhaps, does not mean that we need to now fit the regulation to the bad habit.
Listen...
It means we need to, that's why we have code.
I'm with you, but, but on the flip side of that, I'm gonna tell you, a lot of these people have been here long before we were ever in town, long before we incorporated, and they're gonna say, you know, we've been doing this forever, we've been doing this, you guys have allowed it, and now you're gonna come down on it, so...
So you're not talking the same thing, you're talking trucks?
Well, I'm just telling you other cancer worms that address other issues that are gonna be coming up. I'm just, listen, I'm just opening the door to let you guys realize everybody kinda just wanna stay the way you are. All we're doing, as, so you know, is we're just popping the lid off that can to Code Enforcement to what we have and say, "Go enforce more," because once one guy gets nailed for it, he's gonna turn in the next guy.
Oh, that's being such a baby, I, well, I got contact with my neighbor there.
I'm just making you guys aware. I want you to know and see what's gonna happen.
No.
Alright, go ahead.
Well, I had, I had the same issue with, it's a fifty percent increase in two to three, I mean, it's simple math. But, you know, I'm kinda questioning, is it a staff recommendation, or is this a council recommendation?
Councilmember, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
It, it was the mayor who, who drove that and brought it up as part of that discussion and presentation. So, staff is certainly not married to this, this is, this is a policy decision for the council. I, I, I thought, and I think Robert understood it to be a request from the council as part of the previous discussion. If we misunderstood that, and council wants to maintain the two, we're, we're, we're fine with that. That's, that's what the five of you are here for. Uh, you tell us to leave it at two, you tell us to change it to three, we're fine either way.
Um, you know, the code, the existing code's at two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, you know, I think we're trying to fix something that's not broke. Um, and, you know, and if we need to massage that number at some other date, we can re-address it. But once you've changed it, uh...
Can't go back.
Yeah, you can't go back, you know, and I'd rather, I'd feel a whole lot more comfortable if we just leave it alone, is where, is where I'm going, and I have another question on here, and, uh, it deals with the second and the third item in the, uh, findings and recommendations. Um, can, and I don't know if this is Andy or Robert that needs to answer this, but somebody needs to, before I would agree to any of this, define the word "large." What's the criteria between, and that may be something that's a whole separate conversation, but it's, you know, for the inspection of large commercial operations, to be proactive, what is large, okay? Is it a third vehicle? Is it, you know, ten vehicles, you know, I, I don't, it's too ambiguous.
I don't have a specific as to what a large be, but in this case specifically, we're talking about two different animals. One being a home-based business, which is the majority that we have here, and those which require certificate of use, like say, in nurseries, which are large operations in, you know, when you're looking from a nursery perspective versus a home-based business, which perhaps could be a real estate agent that has a computer in their home, those are the difference I'm trying to make between one or the other, if I make myself understood.
So is ag exempt from this? Are, are they out of the picture? It doesn't apply to them?
It's a wide ag.
Yeah, yeah, I just think there's some sort of a trigger mechanism.
Yeah.
Gives it large.
I, 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 I'm, um, this is the first I'm seeing this also, and, and I, I'm listening to the comments. A couple of things I just have to clarify legally, because there were just some wrong comments made, and I just wanna clarify it. One, prior to the town's existence, commercial vehicles were never allowed to be brought to people's homes. The county co-prohibited it. It was the town that increased it from zero to two. It wasn't unlimited before that, it was none before that. So it wasn't until two thousand that we allowed enough zoning to allow two, so I wanna clarify that. Two, an employee is never allowed to drive a commercial vehicle back to someone's private residence, okay? That's not allowed. The commercial vehicle definition says that the owner of the house has to drive that vehicle as their vehicle. That's what the code said, that's how the council created it. No one else can drive that vehicle, it's their vehicle. And, and I just wanna clarify that. So that's how you got to two, by saying, maybe a husband, maybe a husband and wife, maybe a husband and a child, you know, but it's their primary vehicle, that's what they're driving, that's where, where that was allowed. Um, as for, uh, uh, two and three, um, yes, we could try to figure out a way to define that, but I don't know if you're gonna be happy with anything other than what you have now, which is, our residents here are very active, and if there is a large commercial operation out of someone's home, I've never seen them not call to complain about a large commercial operation out of someone's home.
Well, let me, let me, let me reword the question then. Um, do you see a need to have a definition for a large commercial operation?
I personally don't see a need in being proactive in this, because I, I, just knowing this town for seventeen years on commercial operation, if something is bad, the residents are gonna call you and complain, and then you send out code.
Exactly.
So we've been reactive on this for seventeen years.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't know where this, this came from, cuz I was at the meeting, and I didn't remember you all saying you wanted to go proactive on, uh, commercial operations that no one complained about. But if that's what you're doing, I'll, I'll revisit it and I'll draft the definition.
Yeah, I, I would like to see you go proactive.
Andy, go ahead.
Mayor, if I will, what, what drove this, what was, there are issues, there are properties out there who have been issued a certificate of use five years ago, ten years ago, whenever it might've been, and we're getting complaints on those properties, and, and what, what we're finding is in some cases, it appears that the usage on that property, what's happening, is inconsistent with the certificate of use that was issued at a previous time. And so what we'd like is the, the ability to go back in, to re-inspect that, to make sure that use that was approved hasn't changed, that's becoming a nuisance in the community. And Robert, if you wanna...
That's totally different than what's written here. If that's the case, we can easily draft a ordinance that states that all certificate of uses have to be inspected annually to ensure that the uses that were agreed to are being followed.
Well, I think that's what the third item is saying.
That's what the third item is.
That's the third item.
Yeah, and the, and the town, cuz we've talked about business permitting and other things in the past.
Right.
And the council consensus was, was to stay away from that and not creating these onerous burdens on the residents financially or on, on town staff to manage a, an annual billing. But we, we wanna have, you know, we're trying to find that sweet spot in the middle where we've got some recourse that we, we can at least go in and check to make sure that, that somebody's not creating a nuisance and doing what they weren't originally permitted to do.
And we asked for bi-annual, because when we brought in us being an annual, it was a consensus that it was not something that you all wanted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more comfortable with, like, every other year. I don't think we need to be hounding these places every year, I don't think we need to spend the manpower to do it, but I think it does need, I think every other year is, is the proper, where it doesn't get out of control for too long, but we...
Councilmember Breikers, just because I'm gonna be the one drafting it, what are you looking for? Cuz I don't think I understand fully, fully yet where the council wants to go on, on commercial. Um, if you wanna be more proactive, what are you looking for that we can draft?
There's two items, and there's two items listed here.
Okay.
So, light, uh, item number one is that there is, I have found many, many times, and the larger the business, many times, the more hesitant individuals are to report it, because it's a powerful organization, right? And so, yes, I would like to see this added as a proactive, um, item that code can go out and verify that they're meeting, that these large commercial organizations are meeting the code. Um, so that's item number one.
What would be the parameters that you're thinking, so that I can draft it and you can review it?
What are the parameters for what?
The definition of a large.
For the definition of large, well, that's why I asked you whether we would need that definition or not.
Yeah, you need something.
Okay, let, let me jump in and throw in just a curveball in the middle. Does this apply to non-ag, non-ag properties or ag properties, or both?
This applies to, um, commercial, non-ag properties, as best I can tell. Well, commercial property, I don't know, you, you tell me, Robert, what, what was, uh...
The majority of the...
Where, where do you see the issues here?
The majority of the locations have ag, because they are actually nurseries, so they have ag.
So it's both.
But, but isn't that like a little bit of discrimination?
Well, here's the dilemma.
You're gonna set a rule.
Ag has their own set of rules related to the farm act.
Correct.
The ag state.
Correct.
So, it cannot be the same item with non-commercial that he's writing, it has to be, it's gonna have to be two different things.
No, I, I disagree with you, so, so what this is talking about is the ability for code to proactively visit these sites. That's what, that's all it's saying, okay? Now, the rules that apply to an ag site versus the rules that apply to a non-ag site to say this is in code, or this is out of compliance with code versus that one being out of compliance, those are different, you're absolutely, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. But that's not talking about, that, that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is the ability for code... What we're talking about is the ability for code to go and visit these sites.
I have an idea, after listening to what you're looking for. Uh, if we put something in there that essentially large, we define it by saying a, 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 a commercial or agricultural enterprise that appears to have more than five employees.
Perfect.
Because then it's easier to regulate.
Then you can, yeah.
Yeah, so large will be based on the number of people you're seeing going to the site.
Um, could it, could it, could we put a traffic factor in there? If we see a large number of commercial vehicles coming and going, because I think that's the other place that we see, that's a real,
But ags, how you limit that under ag?
Once again, this just means you visit, you go there, you say, hey, you know what? They're, they're meeting all the regulations, they're doing what they're supposed to do, you turn around, you leave, you go away. Even if there's a lot of traffic.
What about just like private cars? There's, there's streets out here, and, and I can name them, where five, six, seven cars park on the front lawn, in the driveways, on the swales.
Exactly.
And they're not taking any other commercial vehicles out, but they all gather there, and then they leave?
Right.
I mean,
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's a red flag, that's all I'm saying.
That's a red flag. Yeah.
So if we can include something along those lines too, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, and again, I wanted some time to think, but, but I'm thinking now in regards to traffic, which exceeds the amount normally found, um, uh, at a typical home-based business.
Sounds good.
Something of that nature.
That's, I, I'm comfortable with that.
It would be really hard, I thought originally, to do trips or number of vehicles, but to put a code officer out there and have to count the trips every single time, um, or the number of vehicles would almost be impossible.
Yeah. Remember, this isn't, this is not a regulation to cite somebody. This is just a regulation to have somebody go out and take a visit.
So, uh, I'll bring it back to you with, uh, that appears to have, um, uh, five or more, uh, employees, and, uh, that has, uh, which exceeds the amount of, uh, vehicles normally found at a home-based business.
Well, let's, or there, not, not,
Are we talking policy, or are we talking ordinance here?
No, no, this would be in an ordinance, that would,
Well, we're, so, we're talking policy, but Keith is gonna build an ordinance from it, right? And then that's gonna come back, obviously, to us again, to, to,
Well, let me, let me just throw another curveball in the middle of this. Um, as Keith is aware, I notified him today of it, about fuel tanks. We have a lot of nurseries with nursery equipments that have above-ground fuel, well, all of them that I know of are above-ground. Uh, I can tell you that somebody was complaining, we cited somebody, they sent us their Broward County license, uh, that shows that they're inspected and have everything that's required to store gas, have gas, put gas in their equipment and stuff. And we turned around and told them, no, you can't have it, the town doesn't allow it. I mean, I don't know where we are on that, if it's, uh, under the Farm Act or whatever, but, so we're having an issue with fuel tank issues, and I will tell you that I know personally at least 100 people in town that have above-ground fuel tanks for heavy equipment. I don't, Robert, you wanna step in here and maybe,
I don't, I don't know if we wanna get distracted, I mean, that's a valid point, but I don't wanna get, I don't wanna lose,
It coincides with what you're talking about, unfortunately.
How?
It's,
I will be happy to bring back an ordinance in January that, um, I'll work, obviously, directly with Councilmember Bright Cruz in, in the language, um, and hopefully we can get it on first reading on the January agenda, dealing with this particular item, unless anyone, uh, objects or has any additions.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Um, Councilmember Jablonsky, I feel like you've got, you, do you wanna, you wanna give some input? I would rather hear some input now,
Than later.
Than later.
Can we recap what we're, I'm, there's a lot of, there's, it just seems to me there's a lot of moving targets right now. Can we recap what we're,
Right, begin here.
Sure, uh,
Can you recap?
Councilmember Jablonsky asked for a little recap. The way, although I don't count votes, the way I count votes is the first item dealing with the number of commercial vehicles is killed for now, meaning the council wants to keep the code at two commercial vehicles. What Councilmember Bright Cruz has asked is to bring back a ordinance, uh, to be proactive on, uh, and I'm only using this term here, it won't be an ordinance, the larger commercial enterprises. But the larger commercial enterprises are deemed to be a business, that, uh, home-based business that appears to have, uh, five or more, uh, employees or a significant amount of vehicular traffic in excess of what would normally be found at a home-based business. Um, such, uh, businesses, while would not be immediately cited for such violations, would raise a red flag for code enforcement to be able to proactively visit those businesses to find out what their operation is, and to determine whether or not they should be cited.
Right.
Hopefully I,
I think that's accurate, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay, and now, we, do we have anything, one, there's a $50 covering inspection,
Alright, so then, that was items one and two, so let's talk about item three.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Yes, that's a separate item.
Let's talk about number three.
Okay, item three, the way that I, I have heard it, uh, I heard it two ways. Uh, it appears that everyone is in opposition to biannual, which would be twice a year, uh,
No, no, semi-annual is twice a year.
Semi-year, biannual is,
Biannual is every other year.
Every other year. I heard one council member, thank you, I heard one council member mention annual. Yeah, and someone said biannual, and so I, I, you know, that I don't know if was determined yet. Do you want every other year, or do you want every year?
I can live either way, I just was more comfortable with every other year, I don't wanna be hounding the residents.
Don't, well, isn't certificate of use every, uh, every year now, or is it just a time shot?
So, yeah, so let me, let me just, uh, throw out one thing. This is a certificate of use, this is not a business,
Tax receipt.
Tax receipt, thank you. So there's two different things.
Right, that's what I'm,
Yeah, 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 so this is not, this is not a business tax receipt, where they, um, they have to fill it out, and we have to do all the paperwork, and all that kind of, this is a renewal, I, I know it's a nuance, but it's an important nuance. When a business opens, they get a certificate of use. And what this would do is this would revalidate that every two years.
They, they would be subject to just a renewal and all the stipulations and requirements that go with that.
Right. It gives the opportunity, it gives the opportunity for someone to go out there and make sure, this is the key to this one, this is why this one is important, is it gives the opportunity for someone from the town to go out there and make sure that what they said they were gonna use the business for is what they're really using the business for, and that they haven't asked for one thing and started doing something totally different. Maybe that's outside of what they should be doing.
Okay, and if the, the, you're saying the frequency is every other year, what, uh, if we have a red flag?
The exception of that should be unless there's a change of ownership.
I'm good with that.
You mean property ownership?
Yeah, yeah, if somebody sells a property, and,
What if they lease it? What if they lease it, and the property owner stays the same?
Well, I guess it's the license, uh, the person who holds the license or the, it all comes back to the property owner.
Robert, under, under what conditions does, does someone originally get issued a certificate of use? Is it change of ownership, or is it, uh, what, what is it?
Basically, when somebody complains to us that they're operating a business, then we find it. That's when they apply for certificate of use currently.
Alright.
I would tell you most of them don't have it.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so maybe a change of,
The way, the way I get it, uh, now, just for the consensus, is, uh, every other year, unless a change of ownership, uh, or I'm gonna throw one more out in for consideration, or a violation is found.
Good.
Okay, so we're done with those issues.
Alright, so then the last one.
Which one's the bulk garbage intake?
I don't think that's, uh, an issue, that's just saying,
Well, I, I wanna clarify a couple of things, because when we talked about that and said, "Go out and do it," one of the things we said is, "Anybody running the mulching equipment and the heavy stuff, bringing the debris and mulching it, we'd like to shut them first, and then move on as, as we go." I mean, that was kind of my understanding, and here's why I say that. I believe that if we go out and we shut down every single person, not only, the, I'm good with the mulching people and the heavy equipment, no issues there. But there's some people that are licensed through the county to bring in so much yardage, and they have to limit it, whether it's 100 tons or whatever, and they can send it out, and then they get back mulch from somebody else, or they trade it off, or do different things. We have that throughout town. There's some on the perimeters, whether it be, uh, Griffin, Sheridan, uh, Flamingo, or 27. And then we have some that are internal. But I would tell you that I was under the thought process, when we discussed it last, to shut down the ones with the heavy equipment operation, and then address it as we're moving forward. And here's why I say that. If we cut them all right at the knees, and close them all, we're gonna have more, so much illegal dumping done in town, that code enforcement's gonna have to hire two guys for the weekends to cover how much illegal dumping that we're gonna get, if you shut it all at once. And if you guys remember, when we had bulk trash every week, the town never, did not have trash on the street.
I'm, I'm not tracking, uh,
Me, me.
This is not, this is not resonating, can you say it out, say it?
Robert, you, you wanna jump in here and clarify?
I, I think there's a misunderstanding in terms that, um, the operations that now are in town, um, are allowed by the county to keep 100 yards. But those 100 yards are generated within the property.
Yeah, there's nothing in the law, the county or otherwise, that would allow someone to bring vegetative debris back to their property to mulch.
I, I'm not telling you that there's nothing in our law, but I'm telling you it's been done for years and years.
And it's violated county code, it's violated town code, and that is the number one complaint that code enforcement gets, and you passed an ordinance unanimously, a few months ago prohibiting that use.
But it's,
Which is in a following slide.
But it's mostly the large commercial, like the guy in Rolling Oaks that started over here behind Davy Feet again that we got, that was doing it, making mountains high of stuff.
I'm just trying to understand, Mayor, where, where you want to bring back that ordinance to allow certain mulching operations?
I didn't say that.
That's, I'm, I'm trying to figure it out.
I said, I'd like us to start with the biggest, baddest ones first, that are actually doing the mulching stuff. They're not all doing mulching. Some of them are just doing intake, like providing a service to dump stuff, rather than dumping on the side of the road.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm, I just gotta figure this out.
Okay.
So, you're okay with someone using their house,
No, 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 no.
Their residential, their vacant property.
There's ag, hold on, we, we, I say we. The county has licensed certain properties in town to allow to res, bring in tonnage, is that?
No.
No, that's incorrect, and the problem is, that the misconception is, that, like I mentioned before, the county had allowed for that to happen, no. The county allows up to 100 yards on the property, it is, it is generated within the property. Not accepting from anyone else, or any other property.
Like I said, I don't, I don't know the rules of it, but all I'm saying is, I want us to be careful in the process as we enforce it, because clearly, we're gonna have to add to code enforcement.
But at the same time, if we don't enforce it, what's gonna create is locations which are transfer stations, basically.
Yeah, but you can't make one impale the other, I mean, if you're gonna,
Well, hold on, wait a minute. On the, on the outskirts of town, on the main thoroughfares, why wouldn't you allow something like that versus having somebody be in the middle of the neighborhood?
I, I don't know why we would allow it anywhere, but I, I will say this, that I, I get your point about one day it's being done, and then the next day, you know, kinda knock their knees out from other. And I don't, you know, I wouldn't have a problem of having like a, a 12-month, for, for those that are already doing it,
I've been doing it a long time.
A 12-month grandfathering, so that they got a year,
To wind down.
To wind down.
No.
Um, but, uh, I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going flying here, I'm, I'm gonna reverse that, I don't know, I don't know. You know, because we, we have, we have a situation in town right now where a neighbor, and they've, they've done a wonderful job taking videos, I'm sure you all have seen it. Um, and, I mean, here there is a beautiful home, looking out their back window, and what do they see? A huge mulching operation going on, with big cranes, big mulching equipment, you know, and that's, that's,
I'm saying, those are on the front line, shut them down, is what I'm saying.
And I certainly don't wanna put anything in place that's gonna say to that neighbor, you know what? You gotta put up with it for another 12 months.
If, if they're in business, and they're dealing with other people, they can contact these people.
What I'm saying is, anything related to equipment, doing mulching, you know, turning the debris into mulch, they have machines for that. Anybody that's running anything like that, shut them down right now, and then let's move forward from there. But I don't know that I'd go hit everybody, I mean, how many people are doing it in town?
Currently, uh, we have two locations, or three locations actually, which are doing that.
Doing with equipment?
With equipment.
How many receiving stations or people that we know of are bringing in debris?
About three locations, and they're all in main thoroughfares, in Griffin Road.
But they can relocate, they can contact these people, and tell them where to take the stuff that the town came in.
Well, the dumps closed then.
We're in violation, and so we can't do this anymore. I mean, they can do that, it's a business.
Well, let me ask somebody right now, who right up here, sitting up here on this dais now, knows where you can haul your own garbage in a trailer and dump it today? That, that, that's another receiving station.
That's in Pembroke Pines.
And if you did Bushel Stop, guess what? That's in Pembroke Pines.
That's right.
But here nor there, most of us used to take the stuff to the dump on our trailer. So where, the dump is closed, so where do you go now?
Okay, so who are their biggest haulers? Who is bringing stuff in? Let's get some names.
I, I, I think, I think I'm finally, I, I'm, I'm understanding what the mayor's saying, and I just wanna, uh, I can, I don't wanna take a position, I'm gonna try to sum it up. What, what the mayor is saying is that he believes on the perimeter roads of the town, that people should be able to have at their locations the ability to collect waste, yard waste generated from anywhere else, have it brought to their property, placed on their property, uh, as a transfer station, and to be removed from that person's property later.
But there's homes on, on those main thoroughfares.
That's part of it, none of it relates to the heavy equipment or crane, uh, and mulching operation. For, you're not putting the stuff in a machine that dredge it all up and turns it into dirt, or whatever it is.
It's making the perimeter of the town a transfer station.
Well, not, you make a main thoroughfare that, but,
Or a dump.
But, but the, the side of it is, where do you dump now?
Well, where do they dump it when they, okay, you're saying that they're bringing it to these locations, and then these locations are dumping it someplace else?
I think they're getting, I don't know, where's it go, Robert?
Wherever those other locations are taken.
West Palm Beach, West Palm Beach, they're taking it up to West Palm.
Okay, so if it's in West Palm Beach, and we shut them all down, you do not think that our roads in the town of Southwest Ranches are gonna be dump stations? And we're gonna go after every property owner that gets illegally dumped in front of? I just want you guys to think this through.
We don't, we don't do that.
We don't, but you can't give permission.
Sounds like we're trying to solve somebody else's problem.
Yeah, yeah, we're just trying to solve somebody else's problem.
Potentially portions of it could be our problem, with, with illegal dumping, but illegal, illegal dumping occurs,
Illegal dumping comes back to the property owner.
Yeah, but, well, if they file a police report, et cetera, um, but, I, yeah, I, I don't think I wanna go down, I don't think we should go down that road of allowing that.
No.
Because you're opening up a can of worms.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're making the town into, uh,
A transfer station.
A transfer station.
Listen, we can regulate where we wanna allow it, or where we don't wanna allow it. I'm gonna open it up to the public, if you guys don't mind.
Well, we're not done talking.
I am familiar with this. Um, there, it is major. And, um, I get phone calls, people ask me to go look at something. One of them happens to be on 166, Freddie, I'm sure you've seen it, under the power lines. Um, what these people do is, they're being paid by the landscape companies to take their waste, because they can't dump it now locally close. They have to run it all the way to lord knows where. So what they're doing is, if they can't dump it here, it's gonna become prohibitive for them to take care of your landscaping problem, and get rid of the product without charging you more money. I'm not telling you this is right or wrong, I'm just telling you this is what's happened. So anybody with large parcels of property, whether or not they're under the power lines, whether or not they're just on large parcels, they are taking in this waste. Now, it piles up, some are just letting it pile, Now, it piles up, some are just letting it pile up and decompose and become dirt. It does become dirt at the end. It's clean. Most of it is clean, there's no trash in it. But meanwhile, you have this huge pile, and they do create a lot of heat, and they will catch fire, and you have one whale at a time trying to put it out. The other thing is that people are, because there's no place for them to store their vehicles, they're combining the two. They're storing vehicles and charging, and then they're charging for people to dump the waste. This is a major problem in the town. You can't allow that. Now you've got another big piece out west, great big piece of property, and he's doing the same thing. Landscape companies and big trucks are coming in and dumping, and in nothing flat, he had a mountain going on. The gentleman that had bought the property next to it called me and asked me, what do I do? So I called Robert, and I sent Robert out to look at it, and they have now told the man he has to get it off of there. Well, trust me, he's got a mountain to move. And there are people in Rolling Oaks. I got a phone call that somebody, a landscape company was coming in, going down the road and going to the cul-de-sac, dumping his stuff, and then leaving. And I said, don't stop him, call the police. She says, I called twice, they can't get there in time, you know, because he dumps and leaves. I said, then get a picture of his tag if you can. Of course, she doesn't know when he's going to do it, you know, and he does it close to pickup. Um, this is in Rolling Oaks. Then I came in one day, I was going all the way down to the park, and I see a truck loaded. And he turns at the first road, and he, and he goes down, and I thought, well, where's he going with this load? He went all the way down to a residential area, you know, a home, went in, all the way down at the end, went in, drove around, and I sat there and watched him, and he dumped his load. And there was like six loads, right, this is a house with just a yard, and so he was dumping it there. And he was a landscape company. So, the transfer stations, which Bushel Stop has, work pretty good because they get paid, they bring it in, they dump it, and then they bring in a hundred-yard trailer and they load it. But that's, if you go to Bushel Stop, and I go there quite a bit, that's fast. I mean, they're loading trailers out of there at least once a week. They're, they've got lines of trailers. The other one that does it is the one on Griffin Road. He, he has it. Now he has a lot of his own waste from all of his trees down, but he's on 190th and Griffin.
Paradise.
And he has done that for a while. But he has a concrete area, and he brings, people pay him to dump it, and that money goes towards him hauling it out. And I think Ricky Spears does it also, he has a small, uh, transfer type operation. Those don't really bother you because they're on Griffin Road and they're moving it out of there. They are taking it up to Clueston, and they're processing it and then making it a potting soil. So that's how they're doing.
All right, let's see if there's anybody else.
David Kozinski, 6411. The only thing that I was thinking, just sitting there back thinking, is there going to be an exemption for the businesses in the Coquina Plaza that are large commercial enterprises? Are they subject to the certificate of use? That's just something I was thinking about out there.
Yeah.
That's it. Thanks.
Is it-
Anyone else? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment closed. Here's a recommendation, I'll go along with whatever you all want to do, but what I'd like is to put in the budget for next year enough money for code enforcement to hire two additional code enforcement people that are here on the weekends. So unless you want to go along with my suggestion, recommendation moving forward, I'm okay with whatever you decide.
I, I look at this two ways. I'm in favor of Robert getting more people because I think he needs it, whether it's two days a week or on the weekends. But the only one that's going to be penalized is us, because now it's going to cost us more money. Now it's going to cost them more money and me out of my pocket. The, you, you, you can't make a rule and say, but it doesn't apply to you. The landscaping isn't, to me, the biggest problem. It's the lawn service. If you live in this town and you want to stay in this town, then you pay more money and you tell those people to take it out of your town. I don't want to go down Griffin Road and see transfer stations just because it's on Griffin Road. Why not put commercial down there? Because that's exactly what it is. The bottom line is, it's commercial. They're making money off of me. The last time I looked, that was commercial. You guys are not in favor of commercial. So it's like, or get off the pot. I won't say it, but you know exactly where I'm going. I'm not in favor of this, not a tiny little bit, I don't want to entertain it. They're a business, they can tell people to go, where to dump it. I don't believe it's, we might have a little bit of issue for a while, maybe some stuff will get dumped, we'll have to address that. We don't necessarily have to penalize the homeowner of, of that property.
There's nobody else to penalize.
No.
No.
Hold on.
No, that's not true. I want to tell you something. I have watched these trucks. They drive all over people's lawns, they park in the roads, they block traffic, they're hitting these people up for whatever money they're charging, and they just feel like they can do whatever they want. You know what? Enough is enough. You, you have to put your foot down, you have to say no, this is not going to happen in this town.
Listen, all that's well and good, but the problem is, it all falls back on the homeowner or the property owner on whose property gets dumped on. Keith, is there any other way to enforce that?
So, can I, can I just jump in there?
Go ahead, head.
So, first of all, it, it should not fall on the property owner because the property owner that, if they get dumped on, all they have to do is call up for the police-
File a report.
File a report, and boom, it's, they, they have no responsibility for-
That's not, let me stop you right there, guys. I go to almost every single code hearing in this town.
Mm-hmm.
I'm here at these meetings. If most of the people don't know to call the police, first of all, and they come here and they were out of town or whatever the case, we're sorry you didn't know, and they may be lenient or lax, and it could be $500 and $150, so it costs them $650. Hold on, Keith, am I lying?
Uh, I, to address it two-fold, because you both are saying right things. If a resident gets dumped on and calls the police, we will never find a violation against them.
You still have to come to the hearing.
Unless they provide Robert with a police report ahead of time, and then he doesn't make contact.
Yeah, which shouldn't be a problem.
And that happens a lot. Uh, the mayor is also correct that if, for absentee owners who don't watch their properties at all, if they get dumped upon and don't do a police report and then still claim it's not them, then yes, we do cite them. Uh, but I will tell you, if they admit the violation, the citation is much less. The only time it ramps up to $650 is when they contest the violation.
But if they were told this and they got hit in the pocketbook and they got burned one time, you don't think they would sit up and take notice and say, I'm not going to let this happen again?
Right.
I'll have my neighbor watch, I'll have something done if I'm going to be out of town, but if you're gone for six months, a year, come on, you should be responsible for your own properties.
We, we've jumped around a lot, and since I'm going to be drafting some of this, I just want to know, is there any consensus at all for the perimeter, uh, transfer stations?
Yeah.
I'll tell you that I, I don't support that, and I'll tell you why I don't support that. I drive by that Griffin Road every single morning, okay? So, so it may not have an impact to people, other part of town, but if you live west of 188th, it impacts you. Twice in the last week, and I'm not making this up, twice in the last week, I've almost gotten to accidents because exactly this activity. Within the last week, I'll tell you, sometime, it was late last week, there was a large truck waiting for them to open the gate. And sitting in the middle lane where it's supposed to be a left-hand turn, and cars that are trying to make a left-hand turn then jut out in front of me because the truck's in the way. This morning, this very morning, there was another truck that pulled out in front of me and was no big deal, except it had a huge trailer on it that I didn't see because it was before, before the sun comes up, and all of a sudden I realized, he's not going to make it in front of me unless I slam on my brakes. So, it's a problem. It's, it's a traffic problem. It, we're bringing in debris into our town that has no place in our town. I agree with you, what we said up here, is, and, and the mayor, that when we, if we do this, that yes, there will be an initial period where we'll see an uptick in dumping. I expect that to happen. But that doesn't mean, but then we, we have to solve that problem, we deal with it, we take care of it, and then it's going to go someplace else like it always does. So I, I don't, I don't support the transfer station piece.
Okay, so, uh, the, obviously the transfer station doesn't have four votes, so we can essentially move past that. Uh, the other issue that the mayor brought up was fueling sites. I don't know if you want to discuss that or not, but I think that was the last issue that was brought up.
I, I think that's a, a serious issue. I, I would frankly, I would rather talk about, I would rather get some thoughts from the town. I don't want to drop that because, Mayor, I think-
Why don't we have Andy and staff bring back-
Yes, I would see that.
Uh, ag stuff, state regulations-
Right.
All the stuff that applies related to that.
Yes.
And we'll have that as a discussion item moving forward.
I think it's a really important item, I just don't feel like I'm ready to talk about it yet.
I'm good with that.
I do have one other thing that came up, it's a very minor point, but I'd like to get the council's thought on it, so long as we're talking about it, not to derail this in any way. Um, but we've, we've had a long-term, um, regulation, rule, ordinance, however it is, in our town, that if a homeowner hires, if, if a homeowner cuts a limb off a tree, they can put it in their front yard to be picked up. If they pay someone to cut that same limb off their tree, they have to haul it out. That makes no sense to me. It makes no sense. They, you know, they, to me, I don't know why that rule is there. Um, to me, if, it doesn't matter whether you cut it or you have somebody else cut it, they, it, it's still debris from your yard, they should be able to put it out front, they should be able to have it hauled off, it should still meet the same regulations. They can't just put out, you know, tons and tons of it, it has to meet the same, what is it, 12 yards?
And they probably would if it fell on their bulk day, but if it doesn't, then what?
Yeah. Then, uh, you have to schedule the guy to come out at a time when it's going to meet the bulk schedule.
Okay, because they're still paying, they're still paying their taxes, they're still paying for bulk.
They are.
So they are entitled to use that as such, as long as it doesn't exceed-
So, so what we're saying is, let me just clarify and jump in here, that any one of us can hire a tree service-
Correct.
That has a truck or mulching or whatever they have and chainsaws, and because they're coming to do our yard and we're paying them-
Yeah.
That they don't need to haul it away, they can stack it out in front.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm feeling a little dumb because I didn't realize there was a difference.
Oh, yeah.
If the tree grew on my property, I, whoever-
There, there was a difference.
Whether it's me or a company-
Listen.
And I put it out, and it gets put out front, as long as it's in the 12 cubic yard, I didn't know there's an issue. Honestly, I didn't know there was.
There is.
There, there is. And, and people with ag, some people with ag are having people come to their home, trim up their trees, and that goes out. Now how do you stop that? Because they're not supposed to be using that if they have the ag. They're supposed to have a dump.
Would that constitute illegal dumping?
I want to, uh, just, I just want to comment on a full policy decision here. If that's what the policy is, you're right, we have to change the code to reflect that. But the one thing from a fiscal note is your agreement with your current waste hauler looked at the current code condition that a commercial vendor, if, if doing landscape maintenance of the property would be hauling it away. So if you make this change, it is very likely not, that your tonnage is going to increase substantially.
Double.
Yes.
And, and provided that there's no worry about, um, passing that cost on the residents because they have then the ability to put it on their property-
No cost.
No issue. Uh, but I just want to make it clear that that's, that's the direct correlation from that change.
Well, I guess maybe we should have a conversation with them. Obviously, I don't want to, to have a radical change there, but we're, we're not talking about additional debris, I mean, it's just who cuts it. So-
Now, you, you are talking additional debris, because right now, the good landscapers, the ones who follow our code haul it out. So instead, when someone gets their property cut, if the law is changed, they could reduce their cost to their customer, um, by dumping it, by dumping, by placing it on that person's swale.
Yeah, it shouldn't, my understanding is that those things are regulated or determined based on the amount of, of debris that's out there, right? So that the more, the more, the more debris they get, the more tonnage, then that, that has a direct correlation to how much, how much we end up as residents paying.
We, we, um, all of the determination of how much we're paying is based on a look-back on prior tonnage that the town generated. So if this regulation, or deregulation is passed, again, totally up to you, it is very likely that that tonnage number's going to go up, so that the next time the contract's looked at, it's go, it's going to go up as well.
And that I'm okay with, and, and I'll stop with this, because I know other people want to talk, I'll stop with that, only because, um, what's happening today is people are paying that, that rate anyway. Because they're, they're paying it the extra, because it happens to me all the time, you know? Uh, the guy will come by, and, uh, you know, about once a year, usually right before hurricane season, you know, the guy comes by and, uh, you know, we have this debate, you know, do I put it out front or do I have to haul it? And I say, well, you got to haul it because you're, you're cutting it down. And he says, well, I don't haul it out for all these other people. I said, well, you're going to haul it out for me because that's, you know, that's-
That's the rules.
That's the rules. And he says, well, then I have to charge you anywhere between, depending on how much work it is, $50 to $300 or $400 more to haul it all away. You know, so I'm, I'm paying, what I'm saying is, I'm already paying for that extra as a resident, I'm just paying for it in a different way.
Freddie wanted to join in. Freddie? Your mic, talking to your mic.
What happens? Like myself, I can only do so much. I'm going to hire a guy to cut my stuff up. I'm going to have him put it in my pile. You, you can't tell me that I can't hire somebody to come do something that I can't do, and that's all you're doing.
Right, 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 but some, I'm with you and I understand that, because I hire guys that my neighbors use or somebody else uses, and it's not a company, he's not a tree company, you know, he's a Spanish guy or a Venezuelan guy or whatever, and I'll, half of them, he doesn't have a chainsaw, he uses mine.
Or an American.
I'll have him come trim my trees or do whatever, and I'll put it out front, but I hired that guy to do it for me, on behalf of me. He's not a tree trimming company with trucks and equipment and all that. He's just a guy.
Right.
Or a girl.
Great point. So, so what we're doing here is, you know, we're, I don't think there's going to be a huge increase in debris going up, because I may be the only guy in town that's paying the guy to do it, I don't know.
I'm paying the guy to do it.
But I'll tell you, if you have-
I'm paying the guy to haul it away.
I'm paying the guy to haul it away.
If you have somebody else doing it, they will clean up and trim trees better than the average. Joe is gonna get out there, cut, cut a couple of branches and throw them out there, or pick up the palm brooms. This guy's gonna come in, like when I have the coconuts done, he trims up all the coconut trees on the property. But I don't have to pay him to do it. As long as he gets the coconuts, he hauls it all away. That's, that's his job. You want the coconuts? You want the 11 bucks for each coconut that you're gonna ship to New York? Not a problem.
Yeah.
But you take this all away.
Mayor, I, I just wanna say something. In, in 17 years, we've never cited anyone for this.
Yeah, we have.
We haven't. We cited someone for putting it on their swale at the wrong time. That happens all the time, and they'll come up and say, my landscaper did it. We've never actually cited anyone in 17 years for having a landscaper place the items on their swale. We cited them for putting it on the swale-
I, I thought we had.
Earlier.
We, we have, because they have complained about it. But otherwise, we haven't proactively done it.
Never.
And it has been, because they have put things outside, and they have said it was the landscaper.
But I would also tell you that if this is something you're considering, which again is fine, uh, I would highly recommend you wait till next year, because 2018 is the true-up year.
Yep.
Okay? Which means that after that, you're locked in for 10 years, so, you know, or, or through the contract, so you may wanna do the-
And, and we're not voting on this, so we just need to move on to the next, and, and get out of here.
I didn't mean to get everybody cited.
Come on.
No, 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 but I mean, the true, you know-
The restaurants are closing.
The true-up year, we haven't had, we haven't had bulk yet, and the contract was October 1st. Nobody's gotten picked up yet.
Right.
And, and most of it's hurricane debris at this point and everything. But I, I'm kinda flabbergasted that Joe Schmo cuts a limb on my property, and I can't put it out.
Exactly.
Hey, is that in, in an ordinance, or is that policy?
No, it's an ordinance.
It's, it's, we made it a rule.
I don't agree with the Joe Schmo part, but I think if you hire a tree company-
Get us an ordinance so we can look at it.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
So much going on now. And I'm listening to-
I'm still just kinda, huh?
Till, anyway. Russell sidetracking with Trumpisms about this conversation, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Which, which ordinance do you, would you like to see?
It's actually Section 16.
Where it talks about that if, if a third party-
It's actually Section 16 of the code, and it specifies, if you have a contractor who does the work on your property, they need to haul everything away.
We'll, we'll email it to everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but is that a, when you say does the work, is that construction work, or?
No, 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 it's for landscaping.
Landscaping.
We'll email it to everyone, so we can discuss it anyway.
And then let's, cut it off. I, I probably shouldn't have brought it up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
I thought it was just a quick comment, but I guess not.
But seriously, I, well, no, I learned something. I, you know, and I learned something very valuable. That I'm in. Yeah, I operate my own chainsaw, so.
You're good, you hired a guy, not a company.
Yeah, no, I operate my own chainsaws. I'm not worried about it, but, you know, um, yeah, it's just a little flabbergasted that it matters who, who operates the chainsaw. You know, so, uh, anyway, yeah.
You're ready to go.
I'd love to review that one and make, I, I don't think there's gonna be a big uptick like everybody thinks.
I don't think so either.
All right, number 20 has continued.
So, I mean, does, does Keith administration, you have what you need for this?
I, I have on the stuff that you made determinations on.
Yeah, right. Good luck, Keith.
The, the remainder will be within your purview, but I will bring back an item in January for the three items that you actually came to consensus on.
All right, minutes. Approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments correcting our minutes, 'cause it's happened in the past? All right. Seen no public comments. Uh, back to us. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There you go, it is, wasn't it?